I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll start our evening. First, I want to mention that we have Councilmember Laura Johnson out tonight on a planned vacation. We have our city attorney Ted Meager out tonight on a planned vacation. We have our city clerk and interim assistant city manager Jasmine Julio out tonight on a planned vacation. And Justin Strickland, our interim city manager, got sick this morning, and he cannot be here with us tonight. So, everybody behave. We're going to start with our presentations for the Fourth of July Parade trophies. First of all, we had a wonderful Fourth of July Parade again this year. I don't know if anybody realizes how much staff time, weeks of planning, weeks of coordination, fielding applications for float entries, everything that goes on the day of, calling the weather, everything, from public safety to picking up the candy out of the streets afterwards. I'd like you to join me in thanking our wonderful recreation team for doing such a great job. Harold Layton, Maria Pocket, our entire public safety team. Of course, we had police out there for barricades, traffic control, and so, so much more. We just appreciate all that staff does every year to make this wonderful event, and now famous event, possible. My three grandchildren came home with tons of candy, and everybody had a wonderful time. And of course, the fireworks were, as usual, better, better than ever. So, with that, it is my absolute joy to, first, I welcome up to accept the Mayor's Trophy, McDaddy and Son, and this is Rob Sylvester. Let me hear it. Thanks very much. Congratulations. Now, this was a Billy Joel tribute?
Ish.
Ish. Tell me about it. Tell me about the piano and your son on the drums.
Sure. Okay, so first of all, I do want to say, I come from a pretty musical family. And so, fortunately, my son and I, we get to get the chance to play together, which is really awesome. We play together in church. When he was really young, I told him a long time ago, I said, "We're going to play music together." And he said, "No, we're not." And I'm like, "Look at us now." So now, he's the one that says, "My dad told me we were going to do this." But I'm very fortunate to be able to play music with my kid. I think it's a really cool thing to do. He's a Macintosh Senior, thus the name, Mac Daddy and Son. And, and I really like Billy Joel, and I kind of grew up playing Billy Joel on the piano. And it's infectious, and my son loves it now, too. He has no choice. So, to get to do this kind of stuff with him is really fun. But I played in bands forever and played music I didn't really always love to play. This time, I'm like, "I want to play Billy Joel music. I want to play piano rock. I want to do this kind of music. I don't care what anybody thinks." And it just so happens that people love this music. And so, I want to thank everybody for being at the parade, for letting us be in the parade, and for all the great response we got from getting to do this. Did you get my son today?
Oh, I did.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a ribbon cutting at Jeremiah's Italian Ice in Peachtree East Shopping Center this afternoon, and his son was working there and can't be with us tonight. Very excited. Secondly, for the Grand Marshals Trophy, it is my pleasure to call to the podium Peachtree City School of Dance. Wait, you did it last year, too?
Yes.
That's amazing. You want to speak to that for just one minute?
Well, just thank you guys so much for the opportunity for us to be able to participate in the parade. I know that things were a little bit different this year, but we had a fantastic time. And our school personally had over 50 kids that were able to participate. And I think it's wonderful that the arts can be celebrated in our community. So, thank you for that opportunity. We will be doing it again next year. This year, we did Toy Story. Last year, we had a Nutcracker-themed float. Next year is going to be another themed, yeah, another themed.
Yes. It was adorable.
Yes, they were fantastic. These kids are from all high schools across two different counties, Fayette and Calhoun. They are a part of our Peachtree City Civic Ballet, which is our nonprofit organization, our Peachtree State Alters Competitive Dance Team, which they are world-ranked and national champions, and then our Peachtree State Studio Competition Team, which they are regional and national champions as well. So, thank you again so much. It's such an honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, it is my honor to present the Most Creative, and it goes to Captain O'Brien and the Peachtree City Pirates. Let's hear it. Congratulations. Congratulations. Do you want to speak to that a minute? I will say, I saw you guys when I was at Lion Creek Brewery one afternoon.
I remember that, yes.
And uprolled all the pirates. And I said, "Gee, it's great to live in Peachtree City."
Yes. So, this was just kind of a last-minute decision. The Peachtree City Pirate thing started one day. My friend Melissa over here and I were hanging out at one of the pubs in Peachtree City after the Renaissance Festival. And I just kind of was like, "Hey, what if we got like a bunch of pirates to dress up and drive around on golf carts and just go bar hopping all day?" She's like, "That's a great idea. I think you should put something together." I was like, "You know what? You're right. This may turn into something." And because it is a pub crawl on golf carts, I cannot stress this enough to people wishing to attend one of these, please bring a designated driver with you. One of the biggest comments I see about these things on the bubble pages is, "Boy, I bet the Peachtree City Police Department makes a huge killing off this every year." Luckily, we haven't had that issue yet, and hopefully, we never will.
I'm sure we won't.
Yes. No, as long as everyone does what the posters say, drive carefully, stay hydrated, drink water, and bring a designated driver. And thank you so much for having us in the parade. We had a great time. We look forward to coming back next year. And we look forward to seeing some of you at the next Peachtree City Pirate Plunder on Saturday, August 24th.
We do pirates better than anybody else. And now, for the Most Patriotic, I'd like to welcome to the podium Dirty South Strength and Conditioning. Congratulations. Want to say a couple words?
Hi, guys. Sarah Beth Hirschi. My husband and I own Jim. We're located right next to Smith &amp; Davis, and we're just all about health and fitness. So, anytime we can display that, we'd love to do it. So, any type of competition you got, we'd love to join in.
I was trying to look fit and buff for that picture. Could you tell? And finally, the Spirit of Peachtree City Award goes to the New Neighbors Club. Carol, congratulations. Why don't you come on?
Thank you. Yes. If you don't know what New Neighbors is, we've been here for 38 years. It's a club for people who are new to the area, like these people. And our sole purpose is to have fun and make friends. So, that's what we do. There is over 180 members in the club, and we just have a lot of fun. So, what we did, yes, I was going, "Okay, this is the 65th birthday of Peachtree City. Let's celebrate," besides being USA's birthday. So, that's how we came up with the idea for our entry. But we have a lot of fun doing all kinds of fun things all the time. So, that's what we're all about.
Congratulations. Congratulations. With that, the next agenda item is a presentation about the Healing Bridge Clinic, which is right down the street on Willow Bend. And it is my pleasure to welcome Mike Conaway to the podium to tell us all about it. Please help me welcome Mike Conaway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peachtree City residents, I'd just like to welcome you to the meeting tonight and to introduce you to the Healing Bridge Clinic. For those of you who... We'll get our PowerPoint going here in a minute. As the mayor said, my name is Mike Conaway, and I am the Executive Director of the Healing Bridge Clinic. We are located at 215 Willow Bend, which is just about halfway through the horseshoe here on Willow Bend Road, right next to the tennis court. And our mission is to provide health care at no charge to the uninsured residents of Fayette and surrounding counties who meet our eligibility requirements. And what that means is, we serve people who are uninsured that live at or below the 200% federal poverty level. We exist to meet the health, spiritual, and emotional needs of our community. Our core values are we're faith-based, we believe in strong teamwork, we love our community, we serve others, we believe in quality of care, and we believe in being stewards of, good stewards of, all of the resources that we're given. We started in 2008 from an idea from this lady who was, presented her Sunday School class at First Baptist Church. Ms. Ruth McCollum came up with the idea. She'd just retired from nursing and thought that there was a mission field here in Peachtree City that needed to be, or Fayette County at the time, that needed to be addressed. So, it was her idea that started. In her Sunday School class, was a dean of a nursing school, a nurse, an attorney, a CPA. They kind of became her de facto board and set up the bylaws and created the entity, the 501(c)(3), and added on to the building. First Baptist had a building across the street that they were using at the time for children's ministry and other offset ministries. And they built on to the east end of that building and added the Healing Bridge Clinic into that footprint there. Doors opened in September of 2009, so September 24th of this year, we celebrate our 15th anniversary. We're excited to share our story. We're going to have a gala at the Portia Experience Center this year to celebrate those 15 years of serving our community. We currently have 23 local providers. Those are current doctors, nurse practitioners, physician assistants that live in Fayette and Calhoun Counties that are serving with us. We have another eight, five to eight providers that are getting ready to join our team. Our growth has been substantial since 2017. We've averaged an 86% increase, or 83% increase in growth each year. So, that gives us a total of up, we're up over 600% from the quality of care, or from the value of the care that we provide. In 2023, we just closed out our fiscal '24, but I don't have all those numbers for you yet. But in fiscal '23, we provided $1.7 million of medical care to the community. We had over 1,200 patient visits. We had over 4,000 volunteer hours that were served. We had a little over 4,800 total patient encounters. An encounter is everything from a visit to lab work, to nursing visit, to phone calls, to med scripts, refills, et cetera. So, 4,800 different encounters with, we have a staff of four. There's two full-time, two part-time. And we're open right now, just about 10 hours a week. But we're getting ready to expand and see more people, offer more services. In '23, again, we served 18 counties. That's because we do several large outreach events each year, while our main focus is Fayette, Calhoun, and the adjacent counties. We do see patients from other counties when we do these special outreach events. But in '23, 41% of our patient base came from Calhoun County, 33% from Fayette County, 13% from Fulton County, and then the remaining 15 counties made up the other 13% of our patient base. We started a program called Healthy Me Head to Toe, and it deals with everything that we offer from mental health counseling down to podiatry. And it's for patients that are diabetics or prediabetics, and it helps them, we walk with them on their journey of diabetes and health care to keep them mobile, to keep them healthy, and to keep them from losing limbs through amputation and from their diabetes getting worse. We try to maintain it or improve it as we go along. We have a strategic plan that we put in place in fiscal '24, excuse me, fiscal '23. It was a four-year plan that took us through facilities, finances, staffing, cessation planning, and services. The first phase of that was to obtain the building that we've been in. We've shared a building of First Baptist for 14 years. The church approached us about becoming sole occupants of that building and taking it over, which positions us to do improvements to the building, so therefore, we can be open more hours and serve more people in need. So, that was the strategic plan that you'll see here. You'll see it on our website as well. There we go. Whoop. I need to go back one. I'm sorry. Can you play that? Volume.
While they're working on that and getting volume, I'll tell a story on Justin Strickland, our city manager. He was at a conference recently with all, a room full of all city managers, and the technology conked out. And it was Justin who hopped up and went to the front of the room and got the technology going for a whole conference full of city managers. Where's Justin? When we need him now.
Exactly, exactly.
You want to, you want to go ahead and narrate? Why don't we start, let's, let's start the film back at the beginning if possible, Caleb, and we'll let Mike narrate.
So, the video just kind of walks you through the idea of where we at, how we, how we were approached by the church to take over sole possession of the building. That's our board chair, Mr. Patrick Brown. He's Vice President of Business Development for City of Hope. All of our board is made up of local Fayette and Calhoun residents, a couple of doctors on the board, a couple of business owners here locally in Fayette County, Peachtree City on the board. But the video just kind of walks through the need that we have for the expansion and the need that we have for the remodel. I'll give you a website, or website address at the end of the meeting, and if you feel inclined, you can go to our website and watch this same video that is on our website. But the video just sets up the need that we have for the expansion. I'll go ahead and advance past it just for the sake of the meeting. But I want to give a shout out to Miesha Construction, which is a local construction company based here in Peachtree City. We were 87 days from demo to certificate of occupancy. So, thank you to the city for getting all of the permits in time, the fire marshals, for getting everything inspected in time. It was just an amazing project to see something happen in 87 days that took it from a circa 1970 building to, you know, today's standards of a medical facility. It was incredible to happen in such a short period of time. Miesha did, Miesha did a great job. They were ahead of schedule. They helped us save costs wherever we could, and we came in the project under budget. So, I can't say enough for a local business in Miesha Construction. And I think after this maybe is a... Can you advance that? I think there's a time lapse that we don't need sound for, but it'll show you what happened. There you go. And that's what we look like today.
It's beautiful. Can you speak to the partnerships? Rotary Clubs sponsored the waiting room?
Yeah. So, the waiting room is going to be a partnership of four different Rotary Clubs, Peachtree City, Fayetteville, Tyrone, and Sonoita. And they're going to furnish, they're going to purchase all the furniture for the waiting room. They're going to decorate the waiting room. We're actually going to call that our Rotary Room. And then, the extra funds that they have from that, they're going to put a flower garden out in the side yard, and then use the Interact kids, who are high school Rotary kids, to maintain the flower gardens for us and to keep it weeded. And it's a great partnership that we have. Cooper Lighting donated all of the LED light fixtures for the building. Local churches, there were seven local churches that gave financial support to us. We had 90 total contributors to the project to date, seven local businesses, seven local churches, nine local businesses. We just couldn't be more proud of our city and of our county for what they've been able to do to help us get to the point that we are today to where we can serve more people in need. And then, in, can you advance that for me? There we go. So, our next step then is to figure out how we can grow the clinic. So, we have data from six local counties. We've done our research on it. We've done some projections. What you see in yellow there is projected numbers, because the census data stops for '22. We don't have the current census data out for '23 yet, or it may be out now. It wasn't out when we did this graph. But we've got six local counties that we're looking at, and we're strategically going to those county, county leaders, sharing our story, telling them who we are, how we can serve those who are underserved in their communities, and how we might be able to provide the health care that those people need and increase both our numbers and increase, decrease the health risks in those counties. So, if there's more information, there's my name, number, email address. Our website is thehealingbridgeclinic.org. Like I said, we're at 215 Willow Bend, which is literally a half a block from here by the tennis court. We love for people to come in and see our clinic and take you on a tour, show you what we've been able to do over the past few months, and that we're here, we're, I tell people we're the best-kept secret in Fayette County, because so many people doesn't know that this service exists, that doesn't know, unfortunately, people think Fayette County doesn't need a service like this. But if you look at Fayette and surrounding counties, within a 20-minute radius of our clinic, our data shows there's 30,000 people that would qualify for our services. So, we're greatly needed. We're in a position now where we're going to be able to impact more, because we're going to be able to open more doors with all the providers that we have. We still have staffing issues. We still need more volunteers. But we're believing that those volunteers are going to come forward as we tell our story to more people. And I just want to thank you for your time tonight. Thank the mayor and the council for letting me be here. And if anybody has any questions, you're welcome to call me or email me, and I'll show you anything you want to know about the clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Thanks very much, Mike. Go ahead. Did you have something, Mr. Stotter?
I was just going to say, Mike, Mike, that was a great presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, we haven't gotten the word out, because I've been here for 25 years, and that's the first time I've heard about this.
Yes, that's what I keep saying about the best-kept secret in Fayette County.
Secrets out.
Secrets out. Secret is out. Thank you for your help.
Thanks, Mike. Announcements, further announcements, awards, special recognition, we have none. Public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had three sign up. The first person is Robin Poffman.
Hi, everyone. Good evening to the city council and everybody here. My name is Robin Poffman. I was in 9/11 23 years ago, wrote this charity book. We, my husband and I, for the third year, we are sponsoring a golf charity tournament. Tunnel to Towers is the banner. We, the organization, the money stays all here in Georgia, and it is on 9/9 this year. The mayor was there last year. City Councilman Clint Holland was there. Our wonderful chief of police was there, Janet Moon. And we wanted, my husband and I, the first time we met, he told me about a Peachtree City resident by the name of William Billy Kelly. And Billy Kelly was a retired policeman in New York City during 9/11, and he got the cancer from the toxins. And he was one of the first people I met of my husband's friends, and he had sadly passed away. And thanks to the wonderful people here in Peachtree City and all the money we raised in the first year, Tunnel to Towers paid off the Kelly mortgage. And so, Maribel Kelly and the five children, two children, two sons in the Navy, and their younger children, all are still living now in the house in, is it Morellian Hills? Am I saying that right? And so, last year, we paid off the mortgage, Tunnel to Towers, of Officer Desai, who was sadly killed. He was a policeman in McDonough and was killed sadly during a domestic violence call. And we paid off his mortgage and his, his wife, who doesn't even speak English. And their two little boys, who are under the age of 10, will continue to live in the house. So, I just want to invite everybody. I have some pamphlets, and the mayor knows all about this, and Clint knows about it, and of course, the police chief, who will be playing again in the event. We're still looking for some volunteers. We have a huge waiting list for golf. Next year, we'll be doing it again. But for this year, we still use volunteers, dinner patrons, donations, and the money will stay here in Georgia. If, those of you who are familiar with Tunnel to Towers, just really quickly, the $11 a month that you see on TV, on CNN, Fox, MSNBC, that they advertise, that money goes nationally for homeless veterans. They're expanding out from 9/11. That money is a great donation, but the money that we raise here in Peachtree City over at Braylon will stay here in Georgia. So, thank you very much, and I'll be here throughout the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Next up is Mr. Blake Hayes.
Good evening. Is this, yeah, good evening. Blake Hayes, Peachtree City resident. Here to talk about paths and transportation. What else? So, a couple, one thing I just wanted to start with, honestly, I probably should have sent this as an email, but it was on my mind. I figured I'd go ahead and say it tonight since I'm here. I, I ride up the path that goes along the side of Macintosh High School. I looked on the Navigate Peachtree City app. Looks like it's Path 1804, 1804. And some of the signs on that path are currently graffitied or tagged, whatever you want to call it. They have no parking on that, that path. So, it'd be great if somebody from the city could just get out there, take a look at them, get those signs replaced if necessary. The other piece that I wanted to talk about, from the same trip that I, that I go on, but I was thinking about it a little bit more, comes, deals with the stop yield signs on the path. So, our city ordinance, Code 7896 subsection M, says that anytime a cart, a cart leaves the path system and crosses a public road, it has to stop as if a stop sign was present and yield to other traffic. There's a couple of issues with that. The biggest one is, well, first of all, you have to know if the road you're crossing is a public road or not, to know if the ordinance even applies in the first place. If it's someone's driveway that you're crossing, well, that's not a public road. So, do you have to stop or no? More importantly, state law, Official Code of Georgia, Title 40, Chapter 6, 371(c), no ordinance that the council adopts with respect to traffic is effective until they actually post the signs. So, we can have an ordinance that says you have to stop as if a stop sign's present, but until you actually go out there and put the stop sign up, you can't enforce it. I know that's something that the path department is working on, getting stop signs up as intersections get repaved or whatever, but just something to bring up that, you know, again, you should get those stop signs, stop signs posted so you can enforce them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Last to speak is Mr. Keith Larson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents. My name is Keith Larson, and I'm a Peachtree City resident. I'm also a community advocate, bike-walk Fayette, where for the last ten years, I've been working with other residents and cities in our community to improve walkability and bikeability. So, with this, I would like to bring good news. Peachtree City was recognized by People for Bikes, an international advocacy organization, as the top city in Georgia for biking with a city rating. Fayetteville and Tyrone were also in the top ten, so that makes Fayette County really one of the best places to bike in Georgia, to go from your home to shopping, schools, recreation, whatever your destination. Now, corollary to that, because we have such an extensive network of pedestrian-friendly trails, walkers also have those benefits. So, we are rising as far as walkability. But with that, with the increased use of our network by our residents and visitors, we do have tensions and we do have challenges and opportunities to rise to. And I know that many residents are very concerned about speeding bicycles or speeding golf carts or others, speeding something or another. And so, the key message I want to share with our residents tonight is, please, if you have an issue or an incident happens on the path, the city cannot respond if they don't have any notice. This is a serious problem. When we had the Citizen Advisory Group looking at path safety in twenty twenty-one, by simple review of social media, we found that less than half of cart crashes occurring in our community were being reported to the Peachtree City Police. It's not a fault of the police. It's us. So, the city cannot respond if we, as a community, don't help the city understand where the problems are and where and who is challenging our sense of safety on the path system. So, I just wanted to share that with you tonight. And also, some other bits, as our city works through, our community improvement project was splosted. Our score will certainly rise with connections of neighborhoods that are not yet connected and including along Highway fifty-four on the east side and a much-needed tunnel, I'm hoping, under the Highway fifty-four. So, with that, more things to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Keith.
Counsel, any agenda changes?
Oh, ma'am.
Hearing done. Minutes, A, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, City Council workshop minutes; B, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, City Council meeting minutes; C, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor? Is that you?
Yes.
I make a recommendation that we...
Motion. I make a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we accept.
Approve.
Do I do it? That we approve the meeting minutes for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, City Council meeting minutes?
And I'll second that for Frank.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve all three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda, item A, change the start time for each month's second City Council meeting for the remainder of the year. And B, reappoint Assistant Chief Kevin Baggett and Battalion Chief David Winkles to the Region Four EMS Council. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that consent items A and B be approved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All agenda items, we have none. New agenda, item A, seven twenty-four zero one, feasibility study for conducting our municipal elections. Stacy Collins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. During the June fourth City Council meeting, council approved the motion to discuss the possibility of conducting a financial feasibility study to determine if it would be a financial advantage to the Peachtree City citizens to conduct our own elections. The City Clerk's Office reached out to five individuals and/or companies to determine their interest in conducting the study. We asked that they compare six to ten cities that are comparable in size to Peachtree City and provided a list of questions that we wanted answered. Out of the five that we reached out to, two declined, one never responded, and two provided quotes. Those quotes were from Gather and Company, which was a quote of thirty thousand dollars with a completion time of three months, and Crumbie Consulting Solutions, which was twenty-seven thousand and a two-month completion time. In the interim, we reached out to several cities in the metro area to see how their elections were run. You were provided this information in your packets, but I would like to highlight a few things we learned while speaking with the other clerks. If you decide that we should hold, okay, so in the, if you decide that we should hold our own municipal elections, per OCGA twenty-one dash two dash three eighty-five D one, we must have three weeks of early voting, including two Saturdays. The hours are also written in the code, and they are from nine to five for early voting and seven AM to seven PM on election day. State code also dictates the newest, the fewest amount of workers for each location. At minimum, we would need an election superintendent to oversee the election, as well as each polling location would need a polling manager, two assistant polling managers, and clerks at all times when the polls are open. When holding our own elections, municipalities can use machine ballots, as we currently use here in Peachtree City, Fayette County, paper ballots with hand counting, or paper ballots with machine counting. You'll see that we looked at, these are the ones where the municipal-run elections, so the city ran these elections, and we had some that hand counted. All of them used paper ballots, but they have some that had hand counted and some that had the optical scanners, which are from Dominion. Gwinnett County does not run the municipal elections for any of their cities or towns in their jurisdiction. Speaking with these clerks, they said that they have one location for both the early voting, as well as the election day voting for the municipal elections, regardless of how many precincts that the county has in their municipality. If there is a year similar to what happened here in Peachtree City in twenty twenty-two, when we had a special election in conjunction with a county-state-federal election, every road, every registered voter has to go to two different locations to vote instead of just the one precinct for the voters here. The city of Milton, located in Fulton County, conducted an election feasibility study and, using the results, decided to run their own elections in twenty twenty-three. One of the main catalysts for the study was that Fulton County was going to more than triple the amount that they were going to charge the city, going to nine dollars and thirty-eight cents per registered voter, whereas they were previously paying two dollars and ninety-six cents per registered voter. Having thirty thousand one hundred and four registered voters, Milton in twenty twenty-three paid approximately three dollars and eighty-two cents for registered voter, or a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This amount included costs such as election staff and training, use of all equipment and materials, technical services, postage, just to name a few. If the one-time costs are taken out, the amount that they paid was two dollars and twenty-eight cents per registered voter. Compare that to the dollar thirty-five per registered voter that Peachtree City paid to Fayette County for the twenty twenty-three general election with thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two registered voters. Here is the history of the last four regular municipal elections and how much we were charged by Fayette County. So, in twenty seventeen, we were charged sixty-three cents per registered voter with, in a total of fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents. There were three early voting locations and thirteen precincts. In twenty nineteen, again, the three locations and thirteen, we paid a dollar five per registered voter, and there was no runoff that year. That's the only year since twenty seventeen that there has not been a runoff, and that even includes the special election that we had, although those numbers are not on here. Twenty twenty-one, we paid a dollar fifty-four per registered voter, and we had thirty thousand five hundred and seventy-three registered voters. They went down, they had three locations for early voting, and they went down to twelve precincts. And in twenty twenty-three, we had four days, excuse me, four locations for early voting, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two registered voters, twelve precincts on election day, and we were charged a dollar thirty-five per registered voter. That's for the general election. As of right now, we have no reason to believe that Fayette County will do to us what Fulton County did to their municipalities. One definite way that we can lower the cost burden is to change from a fifty percent plus one majority needed to win a seat to a popular vote. That would eliminate the need to have runoff elections unless, in the case of a tie. That change would have to be done by the state legislature in the form of a change to our charter. The stated purpose for conducting the financial feasibility studies determine if it would be a financial advantage to Peachtree City citizens to conduct our own elections. With three out of the past four general elections ending in a runoff and each runoff costing tens of thousands of dollars, we are asking you this evening to begin considering if you allow us to reach out to the delegation to start the process of changing the charter. That would be one sure way to lower the cost to our citizens. If... So, there's any questions? No? Ms. Brown, did you have something next?
I have a presentation.
Before you get to that?
Yeah. Do you have a question for Stacy?
Stacy, those mathematical numbers you gave us, and you validated all of that with Coweta, or, excuse me, with Clint, Milton?
That's where we got the information from.
From Milton?
Yeah.
Because when I first brought this up a year and a half ago, when I asked the council, can we do a feasibility study, I was trying to do more in-house feasibility. It wasn't going out to getting a budget or getting a contract to do it through the, there's nothing in the budget to do this. So, if we choose to do this, it's gonna be coming out of our hide.
Yes, sir.
But those are the actual numbers now. You know, based upon that, it doesn't seem reasonable that we would go ahead and do it in-house. I mean, we'd do it by contract.
Milton did it. Milton did it in-house. Yes.
Was that inclusive of the hundred and fifteen thousand, the cost of staff? Or is that just the cost of the election?
I do not know the answer to that. I believe, I believe, so there were two staff members that were involved with the Milton study, and then they had two from the public and two council.
Yeah, they had a total of six people.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Stacy.
Very welcome.
Any other questions for Stacy?
Yeah, the same question that I asked in our two-by-two, whether or not we got an itemized invoice or description of what the hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cost was.
No, we did not. All I know is that it was more than what they projected it would be, and that's partially because they ended up having three locations to vote instead of two. They projected they would only need two, and they had three.
Right, they didn't have to. They just chose to.
They, that's what they chose to do. But their projections were for two. They chose to have three.
Questions for Stacy? Clint?
Yeah, I meant, I just got a little clarification, that's all I'm looking for. The way I look at these charts and graphs and think, not graphs, but charts that you put together, is one of them is for county-run election, and the other is for municipal-run election.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I understand. Because I did some of the math also, just like I'm sure you have, and having a little bit of statistical background, I'm basically saying some of these that did not have, yeah, that one's fine. Leave that one up. Leave the other one up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll let you go back to that. There we go, that one right there. Oh, yes, that's...
That's municipal-run.
Right, I want the one that's the county-run one.
There it is. That's that one.
Okay, thank you. The county-run election, obviously, there's things missing in there, so the data is just not inclusive enough to really...
What, what kind of things do you...
A conclusion.
What kind of things...
Wait a minute, let me get to the right page here.
It's the other chart.
Yeah, it's the other chart.
This is the county-run.
Yeah, I know.
The other ones were municipal-run.
Okay, go back to the other one, the municipal-run one. Sorry. Okay. There's things that are missing there, obviously, in line item two and line item four, they're really, who cares, you know, what it was because they didn't have the rest of the information. And secondly, in column three, one of them is Lawrenceville doesn't know their voter base, so it had an unknown number. So, you really can't do a good calculation based on not having, having the unknowns in this.
Right. Lawrenceville did not know, they said that Gwinnett County actually registered, is what the clerk told me, so they did not know offhand the number of voters.
Okay. So, what I did is I took those two pieces of information, those two line items, I took them out, and I looked at the last two, which would be the top item and then Riverdale. And those, you do have enough information to do a calculation. And the variety of numbers came up to be seven dollars and fifty cents on the high side and three dollars and eighty-two cents on my calculations on the other side, still very far above what we're being charged. And so, in a way, I think your information is valid based on my calculations on this stuff. But when you go over to the other, go to the other chart, if you don't mind. Oh, there. Okay, that's that one. That one shows that pretty much all of them have enough data to make some statistical-type evaluation. In essence, the values that came out that are averaged out, about two dollars and thirty cents per registered voter. And I heard you say it was a dollar and thirty-five cents. How did you get that number when I'm looking at the data here and I just, simple mathematics?
That's ours. That's what we were charged.
I've got Peachtree City is, at the bottom line there, seventy-five thousand.
Right. The number I gave you, though, was comparing just for the general. The number there, the seventy-five thousand, includes the general and the runoff.
I see.
So, the number I gave you, we were just comparing general to general.
Okay, general. I got you.
For example, Milton did not have a runoff.
I understand. I missed that.
Milton did not have a runoff.
Okay, thank you. I missed that part.
Yeah.
Regardless of a runoff or not, you gotta say, what did it cost to vote these people in? And the total cost is the general plus the runoff. So, the total really was seventy-five thousand three hundred and sixty, and that was twenty twenty-three, I believe?
Yes, sir.
That's the numbers it says here?
Yes, sir. Twenty twenty-three.
And that comes to two dollars and thirty-five cents.
We get a bargain in Fayette County compared to...
Okay, compared to others, yeah, you're correct. Douglasville's the only other one that's cheaper than us, and other than that, the rest of them are higher than us.
Douglasville did not have a runoff.
It doesn't say. It just says...
It did not have a runoff.
Okay. Well, it doesn't say it in the data that we got.
Right. Did not have a runoff. Dunwoody did not have a runoff. Atworth and the Noonan one was only, it was only, the reason why those numbers are so small was it was only one district had a runoff.
Yeah, I deleted that because it doesn't, you know, it was only one, one thing. I want to compliment you on the information. I really like it. I'm a numbers guy. I love going through that stuff, as you know. I like looking at this. I'm still not happy that we don't have all the data, because I'm a data guy, but I tell you what, good job, Stacy, on at least giving us a good rudimentary opening salvo on this discussion. So, my thanks to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Stacy.
Thank you. Hold on. Okay, so, in twenty twenty-two, we had a very different situation happen, though. If you recall, that was the special election when Clint got elected, and the original invoice that was sent to Peachtree City by Fayette County Board of Elections was in excess of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the two elections. And after I spoke at council somewhere in the next, as a public comment, not as a council member, but it got negotiated down. And what ended up happening was the general election was negotiated down to sixty-one thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars because Fayette County chose to agree to absorb some of the cost. So, we have no guarantee that that will continue to be the case.
Well, Fayette County also ran in twenty twenty-two, that was the governor's race and some other races, and a senate race. And in fact, the senate race also went to a runoff. So, it wasn't just our race. You know, it was a governor's race and a senate race. Okay.
It doesn't change the fact that when Fayette County bills us, they set a rate, and then if we fuss at the rate or the amount that we were charged, in the past, they negotiated it down to a lower, lesser number by absorbing some of the cost. But we have no... But we have no guarantee going forward that that will continue to be the case.
They, I don't, I mean, all the invoices, they get reviewed, you know, when we look at them, when we get them. So, I mean, there's no guarantees, of course, but when it's a municipal race, those amounts do get, other municipalities that are having races do get divvied out. The early locations, early voting locations get divvied out, you know, between all the municipalities that are having races.
Right.
So Tyrone, Fayetteville, Brooks, they all pay a portion, and it's per, you know, registered voters.
Right. I'd like to make my presentation now.
Can I make one more comment and then can I do that, Mayor?
Yes.
On the Peachtree Corners one, which if you would go back one slide? If you would go back one slide?
He's there.
Oh, it's up there. The Peachtree Corners, thank you. I noticed that it says that that was paper and optical scanner combo, cost not included. What the heck does that mean? Because at $29,000 for paper and optical scanners, for $28,000, that's basically a dollar, a dollar a vote. That's a pretty cheap compared to what we're paying.
They borrowed the scanners from Gwinnett County to allow Gwinnett County to use some of their locations for their voting.
So there's no hard, there's no way you can put a cost on that, then, if they borrowed it?
Correct. They borrowed the Dominion scanners from Gwinnett County.
Is more digging on this going to help us get more information, or is this...
That would probably be...
About the only thing we're going to get is what we got right now.
This is just, this was just cursory from myself doing, you know, speaking with the clerks. I imagine if you, you know, we have 18, 17 or 18 questions that we had put forth to the, you know, for the feasibility study, if this is how you choose to go. And those are the questions that we wanted, you know, answers to, you know, if you price out equipment or the paper. For example, if they need extra insurance, you know, with this litigious society that we live in, do they get extra insurance? You're going to have costs for legal because, you know, the Secretary of State's office is not, from what I understand, is not very helpful with this. So lawyers have been involved, you know, the city attorneys have been involved, so...
So we really don't have a grasp yet on the cost, is what I'm hearing.
Not the cost of... Any other questions for Stacy?
Nope.
Not the cost of us doing it. We do have a better idea unless, you know, from Fayette County.
Oh, thank you. I think that's good information.
Yeah. All right. Ms. Brown?
Okay, so tonight I'm making a presentation in favor of doing a feasibility study to be completed in order to determine the financial benefit of conducting our own elections. Since some of this was discussed prior to my joining the council in January, I did ask Councilman Distadio to outline some of the history of this for us.
Okay. What I gave you is okay.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Keep in mind, this is what Councilman Distadio wrote. In 2023, the Peachtree City, I'm sorry, next slide. Thank you. In 2023, the Peachtree City Council discussed doing a feasibility study to see if we should conduct our own elections. We agreed that the issue should be delayed until July 2024, so there would be ample time to do a feasibility study prior to the time when an intergovernment agreement would be needed with Fayette County for them to conduct our municipal election. As discussed in the June 4 meeting this year, that IGA is done in the first quarter of a municipal election year. Thus, we need to begin that feasibility study now. Prior to the 2023 council meeting, Frank attended meetings with citizens who indicated that they would support Peachtree City performing their own municipal elections, becoming the superintendent of our own municipal elections, and Frank also personally met with Rick Morrig, who was the Milton City Councilman, and to discuss the reasons why Milton proposed to run their own elections. He and Rick discussed the feasibility study that they had completed and what they were going to do beginning with their 2023 municipal election. The information that Frank gained by doing this included meeting with Rick, learning about security paper ballots that are hand-counted and hand-tabulated, and participating in a training class that taught the Missouri method of hand-counting and hand-tabulating hand-marked paper ballots. Osage County, Missouri, voted to conduct all of their countywide elections on security paper ballots that are hand-marked, hand-counted, and hand-tabulated. Linda Rantz, a Missouri citizen, demonstrated the counting and tabulating method that they have developed. It uses a bubble dot sheet, kind of similar to bingo dotting. It uses a bubble dot sheet to log each vote from every paper ballot. Frank also participated in a trial tabulation exercise. It made him realize that the process could be done on a municipal scale in an efficient, accurate manner. It uses simple equipment such as a Sharpie marker, a ruler, and a bubble dot sheet designed for that election. There's no electronic equipment that could fail or be compromised. Also, a lot of citizens distrust the Dominion voting equipment and would prefer to vote manually on paper ballots that are hand-counted and tabulated. That is one reason many citizens have switched to voting on absentee ballots. At our June 4 meeting during City Council topics, Councilwoman Brown, that would be me, reintroduced the subject, and I reminded council and the public that in 2023, council had agreed to starting the feasibility study beginning in July of 2024. Okay, next slide, please. At our meeting on June 4, City Council agreed that city staff would contact third-party vendors for cost estimates to do a feasibility study and get more information about how much it costs for other cities to conduct their own elections and/or to have their county board of elections run them. They got two estimates and gathered some data as outlined in the agenda packet. It's at this point that I really want to say that unfortunately, I felt like with the presentation of the agenda item that was just made, that the entire presentation I intended to make had been hijacked, and a discussion on changing the election dynamics that was made prior to any open discussion of the issue or any presentation from me. The recommendation to authorize staff to reach out to our legislative delegation to revise our charter to allow for a popular vote instead of a majority vote was extremely premature. So thank you to the staff for going ahead and changing that phrase in the agenda and changing it from "to authorize" to "begin to consider permitting staff." However, making a recommendation prior to doing the feasibility study is just really not acceptable. Let's remember that this item is on the agenda tonight because I requested for it to be placed on the agenda, and I deserve the courtesy of making my presentation, and council will then decide how we proceed. Next slide, please. So what I would like to suggest is an alternative to having an outside organization do the, a third-party vendor do the feasibility study. So I suggest that council could actually establish an election feasibility committee comprised of one council member, and of course, we would have the option of choosing to have two council members on there, plus two Peachtree City citizens with knowledge and experience in elections, including election laws, election rules, and election procedures. And you may think people don't know about it, but there's plenty of people who do know about elections. Lots of poll workers, poll managers, et cetera. Two relevant subject matter experts who are well-versed in election laws, rules, procedures, and election integrity issues, not necessarily from Peachtree City, plus two city staff who are non-voting members of the committee, because they would be able to gather data from other cities or municipalities without the need for open records requests. They could post notices to comply with the open meetings laws, take minutes and ensure that all of the open meetings laws regulations are met, and help write up the findings and the data to be presented to the city council. Thus, a committee with a total of seven members, but only five who vote on committee decisions could be established. Subject matter experts could include people such as Matt Rowensack from Roswell. He co-wrote the Poll Worker and Poll Watcher Manual for Milton and worked as a paper ballot tabulator in their 2023 election. Or Tanya Sosa from the Georgia Constitution Party, who is active in statewide election integrity issues and paper ballots. Or Rick Morrig, who's the former city councilman from Milton, who spearheaded Milton's transition to conduct their own elections. Councilman Distadio met with Rick more than a year ago. Or it could be a board of elections member from a neighboring county, such as Roy McLean from Spalding County, who has handled Spalding County's transition to hand-counting their Dominion ballots to verify electronic voting totals prior to the county certifying all of their elections. So I believe that we can assemble a committee consisting of one councilman, two citizens, two subject matter experts, and two city staff, who would effectively and efficiently complete the feasibility study at a minimal cost to the city. We could ask people to apply for a place on the committee so we could ensure getting citizen members and subject matter experts with the right amount of background knowledge. The next slide, please. And this is actually a sample of what a subject matter expert's background would include. This is from Tanya Sosa. She writes, "I've been part of the Voter GA's research team investigating elections for the last three years, and I'm an executive coordinator for Voter GA for two years. I've run the election hotline for Voter GA and served as the Poll Watcher Coordinator for the Constitution Party and the Libertarian Party since the 2022 general election, for which I've communicated with election supervisors in different counties in the effort to address concerns of observers and resolve issues. For all these tasks, I've studied election laws, rules, and procedures carefully and in communication with several election directors across the state. I consulted election directors and board of election members from three Georgia counties to develop the Cherokee Hand Count Method. This includes elements from a tally sheet that allows the hand-counting of all races and questions on any size ballot by reading the ballot only once and all the chain of custody requirements by Georgia rules and regulations. It is a process that is fully auditable, organized, and accurate, and requires only two hours of training. It was tested using general election ballots from a Cherokee precinct with 22 races and questions. I designed all the forms used and trained all the volunteers. The test hand count confirmed the official results for the precinct with no errors." Next slide, please. So regarding the feasibility study questions that were presented by staff, personally, I feel that in reviewing those study questions, I don't feel that we need to examine the cost of purchasing our own Dominion machines and how many we would need to meet the needs of the number of registered voters versus the cost of paper ballots versus the cost of maintaining our contract with the county. That would be question number 15. I also don't feel that we need question number 16, which is the cost to secure the voting machines when not in use, because if we don't buy them, we don't need to store them. The purpose of conducting our municipal election is to save money, increase customer satisfaction and confidence. Buying, testing, and storing expensive Dominion equipment is not going to be cost-effective. Plus, if you have a machine problem, you have to use a Dominion technician." So the next slide is, is that, yeah, I'm sorry. Hand-marked and hand-counted paper ballots increase citizen satisfaction and confidence. On October 11 of 2020, federal district, or District Federal Court Judge Amy Totenberg issued an opinion that the Dominion system ballot is unverifiable to the voter and violates two Georgia statutes because the ballot contains a QR code that is not encrypted and it is not readable by the voter. With the 2020 election just days away, Judge Totenberg had to acknowledge that there was no time to change to a different system for the 2020 election. But now, four years later, we still have the same electronic equipment that is still unverifiable to the voter and violates two Georgia statutes. Next slide, please. In February of 2024, just this year, during a four-week bench trial for the case Curling v. Raffensperger, which started back actually in 2018 as Curling v. Kemp, when Brian Kemp, our current governor, was the Secretary of State. But anyway, that case had a four-week-long bench trial back in February, and the following facts were presented in Judge Totenberg's court. Dr. Alex J. Haldeman borrowed a pen and proceeded to two flip votes in a ballot marking device that was in the courtroom. Having done the same thing three years ago, he also proved to Judge Totenberg that Secretary of State Brad Raffensperger had not corrected the security flaw with the Dominion equipment. Plus, Secretary of State Raffensperger has not upgraded the software suite, even though four successive software updates have been approved by the Election Assistance Commission, which is the EAC. Staff from Secretary of State, the Secretary of State Office indicated that no one in the Secretary of State's office is in charge of cybersecurity of Georgia's election system, and that this has been outsourced to Dominion. The Curling case, sorry, I didn't change the slide yet. Go back, sorry. The Curling case represents new hope in relief for Georgians. In our city budget, we are seeing significant increases for software to maintain cybersecurity and to protect us from hackers and cyber attacks. So how is there true election integrity when the Dominion software has not been updated in more than four years, when four updates are approved to fix major system problems? Next slide. Buying Dominion equipment, quite honestly, would violate Georgia law. It would be a waste of money. Simply put, it's really just not an option. Next slide. Carefully structuring each of the election decisions that we have the authority to control will enable us to have a financial advantage, greater citizen satisfaction and confidence in our elections. Cuida County citizens have asked their commissioners on a regular basis to have all Cuida municipalities conduct their own elections with hand-marked, hand-counted paper ballots. Kind of similar to what Gwinnett is doing. Next slide, please. In Cuida County, this is a partial summary of what data they compiled. This shows from the year on the bottom, 1997, to the top, 2023, only the odd-numbered years, you'll notice that. That's very specific because this is the cost for elections, for all elections within Cuida County for each of the years listed. I took out the years when we had general elections because that skews all of the data. So this chart actually shows the year, the total cost adjusted to $2023. So it's not like over time the numbers would have changed just because of inflation. This means that the numbers on the bottom of the chart in red are in $2023 equivalents for elections conducted in each of those years. Their data included all elections in the county, as I said. That would include referendum elections, lost elections, and all municipal elections and runoffs. So that was the reason why I eliminated the even-numbered years. From 2019 to 2023, the numbers that are in blue are elections that were conducted on Dominion machines. The average per capita cost was $6.36. Now, keeping in mind, this is more than one election, so it's every election that was done in 2023, 2021 and 2019. So you can see that the average over on the right-hand side for Dominion machines was $6.36 per capita. From 2020, excuse me, from 2019, wrong year, sorry, from 2002 to 2018, the numbers in green, elections were conducted on Diebold ballot marking devices. The average per capita was $4.30. Now, keep in mind, these are all equivalent on $2023, so the cost was lower when we were using here in Georgia the Diebold voting equipment. And the lowest numbers on the chart are the numbers in red. And the lowest numbers on the chart are the numbers in red. So those, the numbers in red are from prior to and up until 2001. The chart that they presented only went back to 1997. But you can see that the elections were counted, conducted on paper ballots, and the average per capita was $2.66. Remember, all these adjust, uh, numbers are adjusted to $20.23 based on inflationary factors. What this actually shows is that when adjusted for the changes in population and inflation, paper ballots are lower in cost per capita than the Diebold equipment or Dominion equipment. The Dominion equipment elections, in fact, cost 2.4 times more than the paper ballots would cost. And this is, like I said, this is information that the Coeida citizens have put together as they are attempting to get their entire county to accept and put in place paper ballots that are hand-counted and hand-tabulated. Next slide, please. These are some of the numbers. Some of these numbers are actually the things, these, they should be very familiar to Stacy, because these are actually Peachtree City numbers. And what that actually shows is the amounts that were billed to Peachtree City for 2017 through 2023 for municipal elections. For the 2023 special election, the IGA originally estimated that the election and the runoff would cost $80,000. They sent Peachtree City an invoice for $133,000, which I mentioned earlier, and they adjusted it down to $93,000 by observing some of the expenses. So the question is, what if they chose to not do that in the future? They could easily refuse to adjust it, the cost for us. On that 2023 invoice, they charged us to rent a truck to bring the Dominion machines and other assorted expenses, if you examine the full invoice. They also, even after negotiating their initial invoice, they dropped the $18,496 charge to mail, process, and tabulate absentee ballots down to just $9,209. And with just 124 absentee ballots in November and 28 in December, that made it cost $60.58 per ballot. That was ridiculous. Election worker pay is one of the other largest component parts of what they charge us, and Fayette County Board of Elections just approved a pay increase for Election Day poll workers, which means that they charge, what they charge us will go up by 33% for labor. And switch to the next slide, please. In other counties, they don't do itemized invoices, but rather charge the municipality a flat rate, which is what was discussed with Fulton County, where they started out that Fulton County actually told the municipalities in Fulton County that they were going to increase their charges. They ended up not raising it quite as high as what they had threatened, but they did raise it. Here in Fayette County, they've not done it that way specifically, so it's kind of a backwards thing to try to look at and equate the numbers based on the population or the number of registered voters. In 2023, Fulton County sent their, uh, their notice, as I said, to triple the voter fee. Municipalities like, like Milton moved quickly to conducting their own elections because of that threat. So what this shot, slide actually shows you is this is what was actually adopted by Fulton County Board of Elections a couple of months ago, and these are the rates that they will charge. The early voting seasonal is $18.01 per hour for what they pay their workers to work for early voting, which, when you think about it, 17 days of early voting adds up when everybody in there is making $18 an hour. They did not change that rate. It's still going to be $18.01 per hour if we continue to use Fayette County Board of Elections to provide the, uh, the election, uh, to cover the elections or conduct the elections. The Election Day workers, where the clerk used to make $130 a day, it's now up to $175 a day, the bright yellow line. And the assistant manager used to make $160 a day, that went up to $215 a day. And the manager on Election Day used to get $210 a day, that's gone up to $280 a day. So the training cost has also gone up. Everybody who works in election has to attend training. It's usually just a two- or three-hour session before voting starts. But everybody gets paid for training. It used to be $30, now it'll be $40. So these are the rates that we can expect for Fayette County to be billing us with in any future election, because this is how much they're going to be paying their workers. So that's something we seriously need to consider. Next slide, please. And so in summary, the two issues to be evaluated in a feasibility study primarily are the cost, but what you're going to actually find out is there's also a citizen confidence and security and validity of the election results matter that goes hand-in-hand with changing to the paper ballots. Milton reported that their citizens were extremely satisfied with voting on paper ballots. Conducting our own municipal elections is a choice that we can make. We can follow the lead of other municipalities that have chosen to use enumerated security paper ballots that are hand-marked and hand-counted and hand-tabulated. Thank you.
No. Do you have any other comments?
No, for now, no.
Mr. Distadio, would you like to comment next, or you want me to go ahead? You want to go ahead?
I think that Councilwoman Brown has amply laid it out. The cost is going to increase. We know that. That's what the feasibility study was intended to do. We didn't get around to doing a feasibility study. We have to get it done before the MOU is required, which is just in the first quarter or so. So that's, we're already behind the power curve. Thank you, Stacy, for getting at least some numbers from contractors to get that started for us. But that's the biggest hurdle we've got. I think it's a good idea that citizens want to do this, but we got to find the citizens with the knowledge and experience and have the time to do the training and go through it all, get the feasibility study done, and put it out to the citizens. If it proves to be, as, as Councilwoman Brown is saying, more cost-effective, that's one thing. I think we got to prove that to the citizens and make our decisions from there.
Okay. Regarding spending resources, city resources, or hard-earned taxpayer dollars on a feasibility study, and the numbers we have are $27,000 or $30,000 for an independent, presumably impartial, third party to come in and do a feasibility study. A couple of comments. First of all, in order for us to run our own municipal elections, Peachtree City would then take on the responsibility to purchase our own check-in equipment, printers, scanners, tabulators. We would have to maintain, store, calibrate, and update those machines. We would be responsible for paper and printing costs. Currently, the county uses the Jarvis check-in system that refers to the state voter database for voter identification and eligibility. Without it, we would have no way of knowing if someone came into a precinct and elected to vote absentee as well. Secondly, Peachtree City would have to hire full-time staff, including an elections officer and at every polling location, a manager and two assistant managers in addition to clerks. Staff is essential for administration and processing absentee ballots, processing provisional ballots, and managing state-required audits, among other responsibilities. Trained staff must also be prepared to field any complaints, must maintain knowledge of new state election laws as municipal elections are held every two years. They must be qualified to adjudicate disputed ballots. We would probably have to appoint our own elections board. Third, volunteers cannot be used as poll workers for obvious reasons of unreliability and because they have access to confidential voting information. State law requires that poll workers are sworn in and that they undergo mandatory training. Peachtree City would have to staff poll workers and managers for all voting locations. We have 12 precincts. Any hint of closing polling locations is problematic for voters and courts allegations of voter suppression. Depending on the demographics of a certain precinct, changing or closing that polling location opens the possibility of a lawsuit by individuals or claims of a violation of the Voting Rights Act by the Department of Justice. In addition, change means complicating the voting method for our citizens. Who will educate voters as to new locations and new processes, using what resources? If the Peachtree City election staff would be used only for municipal elections and not county, state, and federal elections, then they would be running lean and overworked some of the time and twiddling their thumbs other times. If they're short-term or temporary workers, then that means that the recruiting, hiring, onboarding, and training processes must be done all over again by Peachtree City HR staff every two years. Peachtree City would have to take on all liability. There are penalties for mistakes on ballots. There are penalties for missed deadlines. There is legal liability, as Peachtree City would have to deal with any lawsuits. Running our own municipal elections puts the mayor and city council members in the position about making decisions about their own elections. This has terrible implications for potential conflicts of interest, and we are supposed to be avoiding even the appearance of conflicts of interest. Having the county run our elections, as they have been doing for so many years, puts distance between city council and city council candidates and the election process. Fayette County runs our elections for us for a fee approximately $1.35 per registered voter in Peachtree City for general elections. We paid $43,098 for the 2023 general election. This fee, as we have seen, is comparatively extremely reasonable, and our services have been well-done. We don't have to hire staff, purchase equipment, or take on the liability. We don't have to take on the responsibility of counts, communications, transporting ballots, or meeting deadlines. Milton paid $2.28 per voter, per registered voter, without including the upfront costs. And I got to tell you, after the November 2023 election, there were the headlines, "Big Election Cost Savings Failed to Materialize." City of Milton, their feasibility study committee had predicted a cost of $72,000 to run the general election. The actual cost was $115,000 plus an estimated $100,000 for internal staff time, because they use internal staff. Milton leadership shared a figure with me this week, $4.02 per registered voter, taking into account everything, including staff time. And also notable in Milton is that right out of the starting gates, the makeup of their feasibility committee was challenged by their own citizens. One member of their feasibility committee was under investigation by the state for trying to overturn the 2020 election. Another was president of the Fulton County Republican Women. Mayor and council are nonpartisan. We are elected in nonpartisan elections, and any hint of partisanship must be avoided. Following the election of 2020, Fayette County recounted by hand, you may recall, a 100% hand recount for the presidential votes cast. In Fayette County, a hand recount of all 72,421 votes was conducted, and they found a difference of 10. We cannot justify taking this on based on cost savings. We cannot justify that taking this on based on election integrity problems. We cannot take this on based on any theory that hand counts are more accurate. And if we, as a city, take on this responsibility, then our other strategic priorities will be placed by the wayside, so says Milton leadership. Running an election is complicated and expensive. I'm not sure what the problem is that we're trying to solve, but running our own municipal elections in Peachtree City is a Pandora's Box that our city does not need. And I could be wrong here. In about three minutes, hang in there, in about three minutes, we'll do budget. And I could be wrong, and if I'm wrong, Ms. Brown, you can correct me. But this idea is being suggested by the same people who want to cut our budget. If we want to save money, then the low-hanging fruit is, and we can talk about this going forward, it's not something I want to conflate with the issue of a feasibility study, to your point, Ms. Brown. If we want to save money, then the low-hanging fruit would be considering, in a future conversation, asking our legislative delegation to support us in eliminating runoffs. That would be an immediate savings, starting next year, of $32,262 and a savings in every potential savings in every municipal election going forward on the possibility that there would be a runoff. So I, I cannot find rationale to put taxpayer dollars on the hook for a feasibility study. I've, I've read the articles that came from Milton, their citizen group, their feasible, their, uh, Milton Election Committee was extremely problematic. They grappled with issues ranging from open meetings, open records, announcing meeting, meetings. This is a huge undertaking that would be an absolute Pandora's Box for Peachtree City to take on, and I cannot find any rationale for it. So...
This is the, uh, you're reading from these articles?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we've seen the costs. It's, we're, we're a dollars guy. We're a money guy. I'm a money guy, too. $1.34. And if you say that's going to go up, yep, I agree with you. Yes, it is. But we have maintained quality relationships with the county. They have served us extremely well. There have been demonstrated problems in other, in other communities, and we absolutely have, these are 14 reasons I just went through, why this is not good for Peachtree City. It's a, it's a, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is staff time. If we take it on, then our other strategic priorities are being placed by the wayside. It will be costly and problematic. So I, I don't know if any of you are now of the mind that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We should move forward with good relationships with the county. They do a good job for us, and I cannot justify spending taxpayer dollars or spending city resources running our own elections for all 14 of the reasons that I have listed here tonight. I just can't.
These articles that were in the newspaper from Milton, they were validated or...
Yeah. I mean, you can look them up. Yeah.
Okay. Well, they're, they were eye-opening, to say the least. Thank you, Pat O'Meara.
Well, just to correct some of the things that you said, election workers are not full-time workers, so it would not require hiring full-time workers. The county maintains a staff of poll workers, poll managers, and assistant poll managers that are only work during the election season. They are not actually Fayette County employees during the rest of the season. Peachtree City has 12 precincts. We could actually do paper ballots in one precinct, and... The issue with regard to volunteers, we don't have to pay on the same pay scale that the county pays on. All election workers, anybody who works in any form as a poll worker or clerk or a poll manager or an assistant poll manager is a sworn, uh, they take an oath at the beginning of their day, every day that they work, and so they would all be sworn. It's the same as what we would do here if we were running our own elections. So, um, and with that, I am going to actually make a motion that we approve a feasibility study to begin immediately using a committee comprised of one city council member...
Can I, can I do some comments before you do that, please?
Let her make her motion, and then we'll get a second if there is one, and then we'll take those last comments.
Oh, okay.
Comprised of one city council member, two Peachtree City citizens with knowledge and experience in elections, including election laws and election rules and election procedures, and two relevant subject... and two relevant subject matter experts, well-versed in election laws, rules, procedures, and election integrity issues that are not necessarily from Peachtree City, plus two city staff who are non-voting members, because they can gather data without the need for open records requests. They could post notices, take minutes, and ensure compliance with open meetings laws, and help write up the findings and data to be presented to the city council. Thus, a committee with a total of seven members, but only five who vote on committee decisions, and with a feasibility study completion date of October 31st of 2024, which is prior to our first meeting in November, when it would, could be presented to the city council.
That's a heck of a motion.
Unfortunately, it's a kind of a complicated issue.
I have a motion.
It looks like I'm going to have to second that, if I'm going to be able to put my comments out there, and that's, I would rather have done my comments before that, but...
So noted.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, I'm not gonna give a speech. I think you've heard a couple of speeches tonight. I'm gonna make it quick and to the point. Very honestly, I do like the idea of paper ballots. I think there's a certain amount of, can I call it old-school way of it being done? That I know all of our ancestors did it by paper ballots, and it was secure. No one seemed to have any election integrity issues that we have today with the machines. And, you know, I'm a cyber kind of a guy. I have to admit that I'm a really kind of geeky guy when it comes to math, and science, and computers, and things. I don't like the idea that we use the machines to decide who is going to be our elected officials. But at the same time, of all of that, I'm also a kind of a conservative when it comes to money. I want to make sure that there is a cost savings along the way. I don't want to just say, okay, go to paper ballots, and, as the mayor said, it's going to be expensive, or too expensive, and it's gonna be, you know, higher, a higher cost than doing it with machines. So I, I understand that there's, this is kind of a double-edged sword. You know, are you gonna get paper ballots and more cost, or is it gonna be a less expensive situation? I don't think the data that Stacy did a great job in, I don't think it's complete enough. I think we do need some additional data. I, honestly, I don't like spending $30,000 to have somebody come and take a look at that. That, to me, is a, I don't like to spend taxpayers' money on stuff like that. I want to be able to make sure, maybe, and I'm saying the word maybe to the rest of my cohorts here on the dais, maybe this can be done at a less expensive by our own staff. Now, I know that there's other, yeah, I know, Madam Mayor, there's other issues, but I'm trying to look at cost savings, too. That's what I'm honestly looking at. But at the same time, you heard what I had to say. I like the idea, but I'm not sure, I'm convinced yet, that that's the way we need to go with getting an outside $30,000 consultant to come in and decide whether or not we should be looking at paper ballots or the cost of that versus staying with machines. So you can see, you've got two sides of this. I hope you at least accept my comment, says I'm trying to be open-minded about this.
Did you second the motion?
Now that I've made the comments, I'll second the motion, so we can get further discussions.
Do you have any further discussion, Mr. Dastadia?
I don't want to make a speech.
I didn't make a speech, did I?
Yes, you did.
Sorry.
I think it's a great idea that we would be able to do paper. I do. I've said that before, I was in those earlier meetings. I don't think it's a good idea to spend staff dollars or staff time to do what we're proposing. So if we can't come up with another way of doing it, then I would not vote for it.
The motion is on the table, and there is a second. We have a motion and a second. Any last comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
No. Two-two vote, the motion does not carry. Thank you very much.
Okay.
New agenda items, 7/2402, first reading of ordinance number 1222, automatic fire sprinkler system update, Mr. Falmouth. And just a reminder to council, this is first reading, we might not need a second reading.
I'm Jeff Falmouth, Fire Marshal of Peachtree City. We are looking tonight to amend the current ordinance that we have on the books, which is section 38-73, automatic sprinklers. Basically, this is a clarification issue, some verbiage updates. We are not trying to enact anything new within the city. The ord, what we are doing is just clarifying some language. Nothing new is going to be enforceable that isn't already enforceable.
Thank you. I think council has had an opportunity to ask you all of our questions and read through the verbiage. Council, do you have any questions? Do you think we need a second reading?
I just want to make sure we're talking about removing the items in red on the draft.
Yes, sir. In the draft, the items that are crossed out in red are what are being removed, and the items in red that are underlined are what are being added.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept, excuse me, approve. Frank, you got me saying that now. We'll approve subject 707-2402, first reading of the ordinance number 1222, automatic fire sprinkler system update.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We don't have to second.
We had a motion and a second.
So we don't have to have a second.
Correct, correct. Yeah, thank you. New agenda items, 7/2403, lead cleaning and remediation of 102 Guthrie Way facility.
Good evening. Dave Borkowski, city engineer, always bringing the weird stuff before council. In pursuing, purchasing this property at 102 Guthrie Way, the on-target shooting range, we performed a lot of due diligence on this, on this property. And as part of that, we worked with our environmental consultants to do hazardous materials surveys and stuff at this facility, and we determined that lead contamination from the shooting range has gotten outside of the actual shooting range area. Not a, not a big surprise, as far as we were concerned, because there's always gonna be some, you know, being tracked out on shoes and whatnot, all that kind of stuff. So it wasn't a big surprise, but in order to prepare the building for occupancy, you know, safe occupancy by the police department, our consultants are recommending that we do lead abatement in the facility. That's basically a horde of people coming in with wipes and stuff, and wiping everything down, literally, to do this. So that's what they're recommending. They also recommended two firms to reach out to that were experts in this, and we reached out to them, met with them on site, got a couple proposals from them. The, we're recommending going with Hibernia Enterprises for $63,840 versus the other, quote, for $141,400. We met with both, talked with them in depth, and the lower-priced company, we also feel is, we think they're better at it. They understand the procedures and everything, and we feel they're the, they're the better one as well, since they're, not just because they're lower. So we're recommending that council approve the amount of $63,840 to Hibernia Enterprises to perform this, this cleaning at the gun range.
Thanks very much. Council, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to make sure that the citizens understand that the level of lead that's in the building is not at a toxic or hazardous level. It's just, there is some, it falls below, and it's just a prudent thing to mitigate that before we expect our police department to move in there and spend a lot of time in there.
Correct, correct. The consultant says, the exact wording that they said, "The levels are not extremely concerning, but warrant due diligence."
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
I second.
Do I have to put the dollar amount in?
I think as presented. How about as presented?
As presented, sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
New agenda items, 7/2404, paving contract change order.
Yes, for this, we're requesting a change order from Atlanta Paving. There are current street resurfacing contractor, they're out working right now on all the resurfacing for this year. We requested a change order from them to replace a couple coverts at the end of Windmead Parkway. They're, they're in very bad shape, and we want to get them before they do FDR over them, which will make the road basically 10 inches of concrete that we don't want to have to try and get through later to replace the pipes, because we really don't have the ability. They're moving so fast, we need to get it done before they get in there. So we're recommending giving a change order to them for $63,700 to replace those two pipes under the parkway with new concrete that'll last 100 years.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve. Item 07-2404, paving contract change order.
And the amount of $63,000?
Oh, and the amount of $63,700. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearings, 7/2405, sign variance request at 100 Huddleston Road. Stacy?
Okay.
Or are we gonna start with a presentation or the protocol?
We like to do the protocol first.
Okay. Thank you.
Protocol, when the public hearing is open, members of council become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. Number one, first, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. The mayor will then allow up to 10 minutes for speakers on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority of council, and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. Two, the mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Three, the mayor will then recognize the opposing, those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to 10 minutes. Prior to closing the hearing, the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. Please wait to be recognized by the mayor, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks, keep individual remarks under five minutes, and do not repeat comments. Address all comments to the mayor.
Thank you, staff.
So this item has been on previous agendas and had previous public hearings, but was tabled until today. It is a request for a taller sign than is permitted in our ordinance. It is this property here, shown on the map. It is the Caliber Car Wash, located at the intersection of Huddleston and Highway 54. That you are here, you're looking at a site drawing. So there you've got 54, and coming there is Huddleston Road. The solid line is the property for the Caliber Car Wash. They have an existing monument sign. Because they are a dual-frontage property, they are allowed a second monumental sign. Our ordinance says that monument signs have a maximum height of five feet. They would like to increase it to, now their drawing shows that it would be a 26-foot-tall sign in their, on the right-of-way on 54. And so the applicant here, please keep in mind, sorry, please keep in mind that the variance criteria for a sign ordinance is different than the variance criteria for a zoning ordinance. The specific language for those criteria are in your packet, but they relate to the visibility of the sign and the existing property. So the applicant is here to present their case.
Okay.
Of course.
Good evening, mayor and council. Rick Lindsey here for Caliber Car Wash. Robin, thank you for setting up, but what we're here to request, what we're looking for is not a tall sign that's gonna stand over 54, it's to get the base of the sign to the street level. So yes, it's 18 feet, I believe, from Caliber Car Wash's property up to the level of Highway 54. Without the variance, the sign just simply wouldn't be seen. It'd be buried 13 feet below Highway 54. I was here back in the fall of last year requesting this. At that time, council was discussing the upcoming, now we're suffering through, the construction, a reconstruction of 54 and 74. How far would that extend back? Would that extend to the Caliber Car Wash property? And also a lawsuit that the city is involved in with a billboard sign company, I believe. I'd asked for it, and council granted a continuance until, I believe it was a March meeting, hoping that the lawsuit would have progressed to a point where we would at least have had dispositive motions argued. It had not yet. I talked into Ted, he thought that it would be sometime in May or June. Second conversation with Ted, he told me that the motion was heard by the court in May. I do not know if a decision's been made yet, but at least the motion has now been argued, and it's before the judge, and I don't believe any additional evidence, whatever, can come in. So it's now time for the, this matter to be considered by, by the council. Again, what we're looking for is not a sign that's gonna tower over 54, it's to bring it to the level of 54, so like every other sign, pretty much in Peachtree City, would be seen from those travelers on 54 as just a five-foot sign. You know, you might see a part of the columns as you're driving up and out of the way, but the sign is not gonna be way, way up. There are criteria, as Robin had stated, for a sign variance. This application meets all four. Number one is when the visibility of a sign is substantially impaired by natural features. Well, again, the Caliber Car Wash property lies 18 feet below the level of Highway 54. Placement of the sign somewhere else in the property would not solve the problem. So that's the second criteria of the variance. The third one is that the owner didn't create the problem. Well, I believe, more than likely, DOT created this problem when they put the bridge of Highway 54 over the railroad tracks. And finally, that the proposed variance would not create a safety hazard as determined by the city engineer. I've not seen anything from the city engineer that he would believe this would pose any type of safety hazard. So we meet all the criteria. I've gone around before today and looked to see if there are other commercial properties that have a similar issue to this degree. The only other one is right across Huddleston, and that's the landscaping company or the landscape materials company. I've also gone around Peachtree City to see if there are other signs that are elevated, and there are two that I could find up on 54. One, the Flat Creek Animal Veterinary Business, and the second, Dr. Cliff Boss sign. Both of those are elevated. I don't know if those were brought in, those properties brought in during the annexation, or were they part of Peachtree City, but it shows you what this type of sign would look like. You can't really tell that they're elevated at all unless you pretty much slow your car down, as I did, and you look over and you say, oh, well, there's a post below it. Again, it's just to bring the sign to the street level. So for all those reasons, we're requesting that the council approve the variance request. It does meet all the criteria of the variance ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Can I get a show of hands how many people think they might want to speak in favor? In favor? Can I get a show of hands how many people think they might want to speak in opposition? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody who, maybe you changed your mind, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Go ahead and take the microphone.
Hi, Keith. Good evening, mayor. My name's Keith Larson. I live in Sandown Creek in Peachtree City. I'm opposed to this proposal for a monument sign, first, because in principle, this would be the first monument sign in the city, and that takes away from our quality of life that we've constructed in our city on how commercial properties and non-commercial institutions like churches share where their location is. When I'm proceeding down Highway 54, past the property, I can visibly see Caliber Car Wash on the top of their building, just like every other commercial strip building in the area. Yes, it's misfortunate that they're, they have a landscaping, if you want to say, or elevation challenge along their right-of-way, and the... elevation challenge along their right-of-way and the property that does not allow them to exercise their right to have a second-facing sign. But however, I don't think in the behavior of most consumers in Peachtree City, that would make an ounce of difference if they know where the property is and want to use those services, as is their right and opportunity, they know to go there. And so I don't think that the benefit to the community is there in this ask. I don't think, really, from a cost basis, I don't think the benefit to the business is there for the ask. So therefore, I request the council to decline this proposal and not grant the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel?
Go ahead. No. Anybody? How long have they had, excuse me, Madam Mayor, how long has Caliber Car Wash, Rick, how long has Caliber Car Wash been in existence? I know when, it's only been a couple of years that they took that property from...
You talk about the company, Frank? Are you talking about this, the one location?
Talking about...
It's, I don't know off the top of my head, it's less than two years. I will tell you, my conversation with my contact at Caliber told me that they have, several of these are around, around Atlanta, I think less than 12, but I mean several other ones. Unfortunately, Peachtree City has the rock-bottom number as far as income, and they believe, firmly believe it's because you cannot see it really from 54 when you're coming from Kuwaita County. Yeah, if you look down, you can, but, and I understand, I mean, this gentleman's correct. If you live here in Peachtree City, over time, you know where pretty much everything is because we do have strict sign ordinances and whatever else, but other folks who are driving through our town do not know that. Anyway, that's the information that I was given from my client, Frank.
It's too, it's too bad that they didn't realize that they were going to be below the grade. I mean, they, it's...
All right, any other questions or comments from counsel?
Only comment I have, Madam Mayor, is that I too, as I drive along 54, I know it's there, but I also see the sign on the roof. I can see that very clearly from 54. That's my only comment.
All right, any others? Can I, oh, go ahead.
I, I agree with, the sign on the top of the roof is visible, and, I mean, if they're trying to get the business for everybody who lives locally, after two or three passes passed there, you realize that there's a car wash there. One of the things that came up, I asked this, it's kind of like asking this silly question, but if they actually built an earthen mound up and put the sign on top of an earthen mound, that would qualify and they could actually do it. So there's an option.
Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is denied. Public hearing, 7/24/06, fiscal year 2025, proposed budget and capital improvement plan. And do we have a different protocol to read?
Yes, ma'am. When the public hearing is open, members of council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the item. The mayor will then allow a total of 10 minutes per members of the public to comment. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions. When the mayor is assured that input is complete, the public hearing shall be ended and council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. Please wait to be recognized by the mayor, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks, keep individual remarks under five minutes, and please do not repeat others' comments. Address all comments to the mayor.
Thank you. Kelly Bush.
Madam Mayor, Counsel. Justin Strickland was set to introduce the budget for the public hearing tonight, but he's under the weather, doctor's orders, he's at home. So I'm pinch-hitting for him. On June 4th, we talked broadly about where we were going as a city and our goals moving forward, and then on June 18th, we had our first official presentation of the city manager's proposed budget. And tonight, we're coming back for the public hearing, and I'm just going to touch briefly on these slides that we have all seen. And here we go.
Good job, Kelly.
Yeah, go Kelly.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you already done?
It's genuinely not working, and it's not me this time. We've, we've all seen this sign, this slide. It's our vision and values, our path system, professionalism, accountability, teamwork, honesty, sustainability, and safety, which backs up our vision of uncompromised excellence. Let's see, yes, it works. And then the strategic pillars, which are family-friendly, a healthy, active, attractive, thriving, and resilient community, along with an innovative, high-performing, and sustainable city organization. Brings us to our budget policy, which maintains our existing service levels in all divisions and all departments, and talks about the four Ms., manpower, money, machines, and materials, in that if we take on a new expense, we need to either find a new revenue source ongoing or we need to find an expense to cut ongoing. Let me put these on, then I can see better. This is the general fund overview, and it looks at where we were, where we're projected to end our fiscal year '24, which ends September 30th of this year, and our new fiscal year starts October 1st. Our new, it lists out our new proposed budget for '25, and the difference, and the difference is $1,132,177 more in total revenues and $351,186 more in expenditures. This is the proposed budget highlight of the revenue, and it talks about our 20, our fiscal year '24 projected taxes, and that's not just property taxes, that includes hotel motel, alcohol beverage tax, franchise taxes, insurance premium tax. Our total projected taxes for '24 are $43,907,972. Our proposed taxes are $45,774,108, for an amount change of $1,866,137. And then it just breaks down licenses and permits, intergovernmental charges for services, fines and forfeitures, investment income, contributions and donations, miscellaneous revenue, and other financing sources. The biggest amount change outside of the property taxes is investment income. Currently, we have American Rescue Plan money sitting, making money. It's sitting in the local government investment pool, and it's making about 5.38% interest. But we are bound to have that hard encumbered by December 31st of this year, 2024, and completely spent by December 31st, 2026. We believe we're probably going to have the majority of it spent by the end of 2025. And as that money goes away, so does the investment income that we get on it. General fund revenue, here's a pretty pie picture that shows the majority of our, the majority of our revenue comes from taxes. Avalorum at the highest percentage of 40, 40%, and then we have our local option sales tax, other taxes, franchise taxes, charges for services. The thing to really look at is other revenues is a really small portion, 7%. So we're, on the day that we adopt the budget, we're also bringing before you a new fee schedule, and some of our fees are changing, but that will really make a small impact on, on the budget. General fund expenditures, this is one of my favorite slides. I actually did something with this sort of in our Peachtree City 101, where we took an average home of $509,000, and we broke down how your property tax bill is split up. We went a little bit farther in the Peachtree City 101 because I think the total tax bill was like $6,100, and the Board of Education actually gets 4,000, 4,000 of that right off the top, and the city gets 1,217. This includes a .06 millage reduction. So currently, the city would get $1,230, and with the .06 mill reduction, it would only get 1,217. So it's a savings of about $12.50 per house, per average home. Another pie chart, which shows that the majority of our, 70% of our budget is the big four. It's what we call police, fire, EMS, public works, and recreation and special events. Out, the library is a forward-facing department, and I'm trying to think, and the rest of these are basically support services for those big four. And another look at it by category, which shows that we are 65% personnel, but we're a service industry, and that's our business is providing services. One of the things that we've added to the FY '25 budget is some positions. And the, I'm trying to see if it says how many. I should know. I've done this so many times.
17.
17, 17 new positions.
10 of them are public safety.
10 of them are public safety. 6 of them are the school resource officers, which will go into the elementary schools and be 100% reimbursed this first year by the Board of Education. And then we have firefighters for our new fire station, which will come on halfway through the year, so they're only budgeted at, at 50%. Community risk reduction coordinator, which was a position that when we had our ISO rating, was required to keep our ISO-1 rating, and that position is currently being filled by a regular firefighter, paramedic. And if we brought that position on specifically, that would free up a firefighter, paramedic to help staff the new station. An assistant public works director, public works is one of our largest departments and doesn't currently have an assistant. An urban forestry program manager, which would help with the management of all of our trees in the city, which we spend a lot of money on tree maintenance, tree removal, trees that fall down and damaged property, the, I think the boardwalk that we had to put money into fixing. Maintenance technician for our building maintenance department, because we're taking on a new building with a police annex, and it's going to need someone to, to take care of it. A civil engineer, an event specialist, a human resource manager, an economic development manager. So the total of that is $2,466,570, but we have offsetting revenue from the Board of Education and by waiting half the year to start those firefighters. So the net cost to the general fund is $1,260, $60,763. Capital fund, and our capital funds are financed through a couple of ways. One is through a transfer from the general fund. One is from revenue that comes in from different places. One is that we do a lease, a purchase finance every year for generational equity. The 10 patrol cars are set on a replacement schedule. Every, every year, we replace 10 of them, and that's based on mileage and wear and tear. A lot of times, we are able to filter those down to other departments to use, but we have to take them out of service for the police department and replace them, and we do a financing, a five-year financing every year on those. Technology replacement in software, street resurfacing that's non-Sploßed is our LMEG, which is local government improvement, maintenance grant.
Steve's cringing back there.
What is it, Dave? Say it, say it.
Local maintenance improvement.
I'll close. And so we get that grant every year, but we have, the rest of our paving comes from Sploß right now, and then the 450,000 that is a match to those state grants. And then other vehicles and equipments and a splash pad for a total FY '25 capital improvement fund of $4,267,017. This just summarizes the entire general fund by sources of funds and uses of funds, and you can see that both balance out at $56,834,098, with $70,936 coming from use of cash And this is the one with a lot of information on it. Yep.
Yep, there it is.
There's all that information. It shows our adopted budget for FY '23 is what's set to use, I wish you, what I'm trying to read from is this, so y'all forgive me, I'm trying to see the numbers, but our adopted '23 budget was adopted to use $571,397 of our reserves. Our actual FY '23 budget put $5,305,83 back into reserves. Part of that is money that we had to roll forward for fiscal year '24 because even though we're four years out of COVID, we still have supply chain issues. We still have, have trouble getting, getting cars. It's really, really hard to get cars, to get equipment. So I think, and I should have it written down, and I don't, but about $2 million of that five, $5 million went straight into uncompleted items from fiscal year '23. And you'll see in our adopted budget for '24, we projected that we were going to need $103,808 of reserves in order to balance the budget, but the projection, it's looking more like $851,927 to balance the budget. Our proposed budget for 2025 includes the .06% rollback of the millage rate, and it is set to use $70,936 of reserves or fund balance. '26, we're bringing on the full year of the three firefighters. We're adding two additional firefighters. And then in '27, we're adding two more firefighters to staff the new fire station with nine firefighters. We also have a 700 and, a $7.5 million facilities bond programmed into FY '27. Whether we actually need to use that at that point in time or not, we were just being conservative and looking at the, the maintenance and the facilities, the facilities maintenance.
Sure.
'28, you will see
Yep.
We're programmed to use, thank you.
It's okay.
I actually changed my Facebook story to say it's at Steve's Job Interview. He was asked if he could perform under pressure, and he said he wasn't sure if he knew all the lyrics, but he was going to give it a good try. So when Justin texted me this afternoon and said the doctor said he couldn't come in, could I please do this? I was just waiting for that, ha, ha.
Yay.
It didn't come.
It's okay.
So for fiscal year '26, we're set to use $905,000 of fund balance. For '27, we're set to use almost $2 million of fund balance. For '28, $2.5 million of fund balance. And then you'll see in '29, we start to recoup, and we're only using $1.6 million of fund balance, and we took it all the way out to 30, and we're back in the, back in the black. this is one that I know Justin feels very strongly about when he started doing the research... this is one that I know Justin feels very strongly about when he started doing the research on sustainability and the things that we provide our citizens, that the city maintains. Thirty-six paths and bridges, 12 road bridges, 207 miles of streets, 100-plus miles of paths, 398 acres of right-of-way and green space to mow, 81 right-of-way landscape islands, 280 subdivision entrances, 4,861 traffic signs, 220 vehicles, 815 equipment. Buildings does not count gun range, 97.2 miles of pipes, 8,298 stormwater structures, 105 detention ponds. And Peachtree City owns 18% of the land in the city limits. And then this slide just talks about our continued path to uncompromised excellence, keeping the pay at the 85th percentile, encouraging smart economic development, investing in public safety, investing in maintenance, maintaining our services, more citizen engagement with our utilization of new citizen advisory groups, tying our budget process to our five strategic pillars, continuing programs like PTC 101 and the summer interns, recreation master plan, ordinance and policy updates, the boundary study, the 911 feasibility study, and the Highway 54 corridor study. And our budget calendar is, we are set to bring this back to council on August 1st for adoption. And then on August the 15th, we'll bring the CBB and the Keep Peachtree City Beautiful budgets.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Very good, Kelly.
All right.
For a pinch hitter, you hit a homerun.
You got through it all.
Nicely done.
You got through it.
Stacy, I forgot my public hearing protocol cheat sheet, so I know you'll keep me on the straight and narrow. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, but I want to get a handle on time. Would you raise your hand if you think you might want to speak tonight in opposition, in opposition to this budget? Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Would you raise your hand if you think you might want to speak in favor of this budget? One, two, three, four. Yeah, council, do you want to keep it at 10 minutes per side or do you want to?
Sure.
Do you keep it at 10 minutes? All right, we've got 10 minutes each side. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? I have four of you. Go ahead and let's hear from the first person. Thanks very much. I have four of you for 10 minutes total.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name's Keith Larson. I live in Sandown Creek. For the first time in the budget process, I can recall since 2005, when I moved here, the city has in place a service-level performance model to guide decisions. The uncompromised excellence vision with the meter set at increased service level, this performance level was approved by this city council this year. The city recently weathered a crisis in retention of employees, just maintain the previous service level comes at an opportunity cost, which I recall many in this room favored. This bill has come due. In fact, many residents have advanced for more city employees, not only to sustain but improve emergency and police services, complete resident-approved community improvements in required maintenance projects, improve city communications with residents, and stimulate our local economy. This proposed budget does just that. The numerous increases in service level that the city council had previously approved in this vision were shared by the city manager in response to questions posed by former city mayor Steve Brown and published in the Citizen News. Numerous employee positions are in fact paid for by insourcing SBLOS capital improvement labor rather than outsourcing, and that doesn't impact the mill rate. On a matter of performance expectations and budget, I served a 35-year career in the Department of Defense, which had to suffer through the consequences of deep budget and personal cuts. We had a saying in the Army, "They asked us to do so much for so long with so little. They now expect us to do anything with nothing." And our mission right in us fell with those cuts. I can recall when a previous city councilman convinced the council to let him make the budget cuts because he knew how to do a spreadsheet. We suffered through loss of capital equipment and decline in maintenance of facilities in our parks through his actions. It took years for the city to recover from those misguided choices and reinvest in our capital equipment. The city is delivering more services today with a larger size and population at the lowest mill rate in our history. That is a tremendous achievement that makes our city a highly desirable place to live and work. The council needs to act on their part of the unified vision of performance that set the service level to meet our residents' and commercial needs. If the present adopted uncompromised excellence model and service level is incorrect, then adjust it next year when you have more facts to make those decisions. As to budget adjustments, I would request the city council to consider using resources to advance construction of a public restroom at Badaway Park in 2025. Our residents are asking for it, they're asking for it, and they're tired of a porta lot at our most-used public park. I'm a fiscal conservative, but know that you have to draw a line somewhere. Let's not return to the past and be penny-wise and pound foolish as the city council was in the past. Don't just cut the budget for imposing cross-the-board austerity reductions for the sake of saying you're reducing the budget. It needs to be tied to performance. Rampant inflation is to blame. I don't like rising taxes either, but I feel strongly I'm getting a great value for what I contribute for my property taxes. The city council should actively pursue, I believe, the senior homestead exemption proposal to reduce the impact on our fixed-income senior residents next year. Please make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in
Thanks, Keith.
Favor. Who would like to speak in favor?
I'm actually going to be very brief. My name is Martha Sykes. I live in Tinsley Mill Village. I am a mom of three teenagers and, and I have been in the corporate world, world as well as the academic world, so I know how hard it is to come up with a budget, stick to the budget, make it match everything you need. And actually doing that at home with three teenagers that eat is very hard too. So what I was going to say very quickly is I read through everything. It looks very on target. What I love is the fact that there is so much service there and support. I would say that my biggest concern every day is not that my son is unsafe or I worry about my kid's safety, it's actually that they get home on time for their curfew. Never once do I worry about their safety from that point of view. So thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Blake Hayes, Double Trace Lane. I support the budget that the city is planning to adopt. With that said, I understand concerns about rising taxes, but I think there's several facts that we need to acknowledge about the city's budget if we're going to have an honest conversation about whether or not it's acceptable for our community. First of all, I know a lot of people probably had sticker shock at the estimates that came out from the Fayette County Tax Assessor, but it's a fact that the rate that's on that estimate is higher than what the city is planning to actually collect. The city is proposing a lower millage rate of 5.983 instead of 6.034. The estimate uses the millage rate from last year, so what it shows on the bill is not what the city is asking for. Second, it's a fact that approximately $500 of the property tax increase shown on the estimate versus last year's bill is a result of the Georgia State Legislature and has nothing to do with the county, the schools, or the city. Last year, the Georgia State Legislature approved an $18,000 exemption for all homestead properties in the state that was a refund on your property taxes. At the city's millage rate of 6.043 mills, that's about $108 of property tax that the state paid on your behalf. Altogether, the state paid for $528 of each homestead property owner's property tax bill last year if you add together city council and school tax. So part of the increase isn't even from the city doing anything, it's just the state's not paying that part this year. They chose to cut income tax instead. Third, it's a fact that Peachtree City is the second-lowest tax rate in the city in the county, second only to Brooks and the unincorporated county. It might not look like that at first glance, but you can't directly compare the city's millage rate to all the others. For simplicity of the comparison, I'm going to ignore the county millage rate, school millage rate, and E911 or emergency services rate because everybody pays that no matter where you live in the county. Tyrone's city rate last year was 2.889, but they also pay county fire and county EMS, which Peachtree City operates in-house, which makes their total millage burden 6.459. It's almost a half a mill more than Peachtree City residents pay. Fayetteville's city rate was 5.646. They also operate their own fire department in-house, but they still pay county EMS, which makes their total millage rate burden 6.146, more than ours. Brooks city rate was 1.207. Add in county and county fire EMS, you get 4.777, which is lower than us. And unincorporated county only pays fire and EMS for 3.070. But those of us living in Peachtree City get a lot more than those living in Brooks, the county, even Fayetteville and Tyrone. Fourth, it's a fact that the city's operating budget has grown. My comparisons are to the adopted budget, not to the projected budget, so they will be different. But last year, the adopted budget was 51.4 million. This year, the proposed budget's 56.8 million. That's an increase of 5.4 million. But at the very start, we need to make a correction to reflect reality. 1.2 million of that increase is just the city operating the tennis center now, which by the way, only costs 1 million to run in the proposed budget, so it's actually reducing direct property taxes by 200,000. So that leaves 4.2 million of truly new spending. What's that on? Well, 1.2 million's on the new police officers, which is not funded by property taxes. About a million is on new fire, 200,000's on new public work employees. Heard so many people ask for all of those things. More police officers, blocking the box at 5474, they can enforce that. Fire employees, who wants their house to burn down? Public works employees, repaving the roads and paths, this parade that we just had, all of that. So unless council wants to go on record as cutting those departments, that immediately takes us from 4.2 million to 1.8 million in new, new spending that is not public safety or public works. But even then, there's a few more areas where council themselves have either said we need this or they've praised, praised the results. About 400,000's in the HR department, which was just praised at the last council meeting for their intern program. About 100,000's in the IT department, which is definitely a need in today's environment for efficiency and security. So that takes us down to 1.3 million. So the true increase in everything that's not been a stated priority by you guys is 2.5%. It's about inflation. Final fact, every budget is a story of trade-offs. Have you ever heard the old joke about food? Good, quick, cheap, pick two? Similar choice when it comes to taxes and services. Low density, low taxes, good services, pick two. Residents of Peachtree City seem to voice their support for low density and good services. That leaves low taxes as the one that you have to give up, which is why we have a higher rate than Brooks or unincorporated county. We get more than they do. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I get it.
Stop the time.
We'll let you finish.
Absolutely.
Oh, seriously? Okay, awesome. So I'm going to try to skip over some of the things that the other speakers said already. Just level-setting with everybody in the room here. Either you're a taxpayer
Could you start with your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Schultz. I live in Mackin Hush Corner subdivision.
Thank you.
Okay. To level-set, there are people who will come to the microphone and say, well, I'm a taxpayer. Everyone in this room is a taxpayer, right? Or you are employee of the city, so you have some kind of vested interest in this budget. So, you know, not one taxpayer is more important than any other taxpayer. So I'd like to just start with that, level-set. I'd like to frame the budget to look at where we've been in the past few years. You know, so in the past three or four years, did the budget produce the outcomes we wanted? And I would say unequivocally, yes. Did we get everything done that we wanted to get done? No. But there's always next year and a lot did get done. Maintenance got done. Some of the rough cart paths got taken care of, streets got taken care of, Riley Field, my own, Riley Field track, my own personal interest got resurfaced. Public safety personnel are visible and responsive and in particular, we see code enforcement on the cart paths more. It's very, very visible on the cart paths. Okay, so how do we evaluate the budget? I will just give a simpler number, simpler number in my perspective. You know, inflation's been running, depending how you measure it, 2% or quite a bit greater. And if we only have a 2.04% increase in the budget, seems in line with me. That's pretty simple, I think. Right? Take a look at the budget in a different way. I brought my own property tax bill. I saw the $218 in the presentation. I live on a five-over-four with the door and my property taxes estimated going forward this year are going to be at 1150, which is a little bit less than that. And I'll pay to add this in because it's fair to, about $200 in sales tax that will go to the city. I estimated my expenses for a year, actually an estimate, I know what they are, but I know how much sales tax goes out. So that means I get to spend $1,400 for everything that's great about Peachtree City. Okay? So by way of comparison, my water bill is 100 bucks a month and my mobile phone, my mobile phone bill is about 100 bucks a month. I do not get the satisfaction from either of those that I get from living in Peachtree City. Okay? So just by way of comparison. Okay? So, and am I getting value for my money? I'm going to say absolutely yes. I remember the days, Keith highlighted those, of saving money and reducing taxes. Every time I drove across the crosstown Peachtree Parkway intersection and Councilwoman Brown and Councilman Holland, you will not remember those days, I had hit this pothole thunk-thunk every time I drove across. And I got so tired and then half the time I would say, under my breath, "Can't somebody please fix this?" Right? And then the rest of the Parkway south of there was just chewed up. And then to replace it and fix it, you had to go down to the surface level. I think Mr. Dostadio is a civil engineer, he'll understand this. You let the road go too long, then you're spending a whole lot more to get it fixed. Right? Those days are gone. The city is in so much better shape. In addition to, you know, I save money living in Peachtree City. A cart path went to my workplace recently. I sold my car and now I commute solely by golf cart. Okay? That's savings on insurance and everything. I think lots of families probably don't have a second or third car because they simply don't need it because the golf cart can fill in for that. You know, and our, our property taxes relate and, you know, because of our highly-rated public safety, lowers, lower homeowners' insurance rates. We have very good restaurants, parks, the night market, the Fred, the library, annual events like the Fourth Parade, and even just to drive on the cart path on a Saturday afternoon with my wife is recreation that I don't have to leave and spend money outside the city. Right? I think it's important to highlight from the budget, using a phrase from the former city manager, and he used to say, "This collection of us." And that sums up how I feel. My family and I, we don't, we don't play soccer. We don't have kids that use the soccer facilities. We don't play tennis, we don't play pickleball. I love knowing that there are people in the city who love those things that can do them and I don't mind paying taxes for those people to do that. You know, recreation attracts new residents, people from outside of the city, they travel in, they spend money, there's tournaments that happen here. In my own Peachtree City Running Club, half of our members or so that are really, really active come from outside Peachtree City. They volunteer in our community and bring themselves here and spend their money here and work towards the advancement of our goals because their community simply don't have the amenities we do. Okay? Two more things I like about the policy. The first one is that if there is a service or a facility in place, it's baseline. Going forward, someone will have to make a decision to continue to fund it. In the past, things where items would just get removed from the budget. And so it was this spiral down for a service or a facility. Money wouldn't be spent on it, it would gradually decay, people would stop using it, and then council would say, oh, nobody's using it anyway. Well, nobody's using it because it was something great and it turned into something lackluster. Right? The other thing, interest I have is that we maintain our reserve in the city, about 50%, and that 50% gives us options. That I, in the time I've been living here, we've had the Great Recession, we've had COVID. It was nice to have a financial buffer for the city such that if we could not bring in revenue, we had some money to get by on until we needed it. And if we cut those reserves, then that means fewer options. We don't have choice to do debt financing, we don't, when we might want to do it. And we also have to pay higher on our loan, loan rates if we don't have as much reserve. So that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes?
Margaret Ross.
You know how tall that is?
It bends lower.
Not worth it.
Bend it down.
There you go, Margaret.
My name is Margaret Ross. I live in Peachtree City. Couple of, I think I just heard you guys turn down the chance of a feasibility study at zero cost, zero cost. Because it cost. It doesn't cost. It was zero. But this is what I prepared to talk to you about as a citizen. Yes, I know we're all taxpayers, obviously, but what is the life of a taxpayer in the municipality of Peachtree City or in Fayette County? I did a little research. Our largest registered voter block are age groups 35 to 64 and they are 44,122 people in Fayette County. in Fayette County. The second-largest group is 65 to age 100. I'm not counting the 17 that are over age 100 that are on voter rolls. And that is 22,687. So you're, let's say you're working, and you're getting a paycheck. Now, I think all my numbers are gonna be low, okay? Because my source is the United States Senate, and you know how you can trust those numbers. But anyway, the United States Senate says that our average 35- through 64-year-old had their real weekly wages decreased in the past year of 3.9%. At the same time, they had average expenses increase. Matter of fact, the average 35- through 64-year-old in Fayette County, their family has lost Energy costs for a family have increased 4,562. Food, 3,640. Shelter, 4,678. Transportation, 9,366. Those are those with a paycheck coming in every week. For those who are 65 through 100, it gets a lot worse. So these are probably low on real numbers. So anytime you guys look at a budget, you have to look at the people who live here. What is going on likely in their lives? How much less money do they have to spend? How is it impacting their lives? You know, we are a middle-class community. Affluent, some say, great. However, we are a middle-class community, and this is the real numbers that our citizens are facing. So I just hope when you look at expenses, you keep that in mind. I have nothing, you know, there's all kinds of great things that are in that budget. I just, somebody needs to talk for everybody's wallet, everybody's checking account. And so that's what I've come to do. I came to talk about everybody's wallet, everybody's checking account. And I want to encourage you to keep that in mind when you look at any line, now or in the future. For example, I talked to Cowie to EMC. Our power bills are all going up in August and September. I talked to our sewer and stormwater. Over the past five years, that has increased more than 100%. And the trash haulers are up 20% in Peachtree City. Please think about all of this. When you want to add $2.4 million in employees, when you want a half a million dollar splash pad, even though I think the idea of a splash pad is great, but if I had to make a decision on a household expense, I'd have to make those kind of decisions, too. So please represent the people and think about what they're facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I can't say any better.
Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. City council, comments? Who wants to start? How about, I'll spool it up. How about that? We have a council city manager form of government, which means that the day-to-day operations of the city are run by the city manager. And policy is set, by contrast, policy is set by a city council. We give our general direction and priorities to that city manager, and we expect him to carry that out. And in doing the budget, it reflects, or it better should reflect what city council has indicated we want to see. So we have had a retreat. We listed a lot of priorities, the five pillars that Kelly showed before. Each have, under that umbrella, a list of projects and priorities that council had laid out. So I believe that when our city manager put together the budget, he, I know, he spent weeks meeting with all of the staff heads. I suspect that everybody had more money in their request than what we now see. I suspect that every department was asked to go back to the drawing board to some extent and reduce their budget, so that he could ultimately craft what we see before us tonight. And it is the city manager's job to do the day-to-day, to take care of all the operations. That doesn't fall on us. That falls on him. All of the staffing. And I believe this budget reflects what we had requested. And the fact that he can run the city to the standards we've all come to expect and still lower the millage rate is an evidence of his hard work and a lot of hard work on the part of our staff. So that's all I have to say about that. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next, Madam Mayor. First of all, Kelly, great job tonight. Really, you know, or pinch hitter. Like I said, it's a home run. But I want to thank all of the people in the staff. I want to thank especially the city manager, who had a hard job trying to put all of this stuff together, and the rest of the staff. But here, I'm gonna throw one more thing out there. There is still a lot to be done. We're gonna be having a retreat soon, and we'll be able to kick a lot of this stuff around. So I'm gonna say, stay tuned, because the group that's up here will get a chance to take a look at that budget. As a few people said, we need to make sure that we're spending the money correctly. And that's all I think that we'll be doing at our retreat, is taking a look at that. But in the meantime, thank you to you and your staff and all the people who've done a good job in putting this budget together. I may have a little something to say later, but at this point, that's it.
And just for the record, Paul Salvatore put a lot of work in before he went out.
And he's, yeah, he's on leave.
Paul Salvatore's been gracious with his time, even though he's not here. Comments?
Yes.
I just want to say that I know that there's people that don't like the budget. There's people on the council here that have got concerns. But quite honestly, I think we've done everything we can do. We've lowered the millage rate. We've added the things on it, the program that we wanted to see. People aren't happy with everything. I'm not happy with everything. But the bottom line is, as a team, I think we put together a decent budget. I think I'm really happy that we've able to fund all the personnel actions, especially in the fire department and the police department, and in public works. Those are really keys to what I'm concerned with, public works especially. But bottom line is, I'm glad that we were able to get what we got done. Yes, we're gonna have a retreat. And I think during the retreat, there's gonna be a lot of people that want to see things changed. We just have to balance everything. You know, it's required that we have a balanced budget. So if you want to take something out, you're gonna have to put something back somewhere somehow. Bottom line is, I think that that'll be a challenge for us at the retreat, and I think that's the place to do it. Not stand up here in front and argue about how to make changes. Let us work together as a team at the retreat and see what else we come out with. And I echo Clint's comments. More to come.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
We are elected by the people, and we have an obligation to protect the people from excessive taxation, and that includes taxation that gets imposed by us. Early on in the budget process, I requested a fair amount of data, and I was told that I had to have a consensus of council members to agree to get the data that I was asking for. I find that kind of odd, because if we're the approving authority, you would think that the data would be readily available to us. That just hasn't worked out that way. As I said last month, I want the millage rate rolled back. There are items in the budget that I want removed. We had a council and executive staff retreat in January and identified items that we wanted to see in Peachtree City. Wanting to see them and demanding that we see them are kind of two different things. I've equated that making that list to writing out a Christmas list as soon as I used to get the Sears catalog when I was a child. All of the items on that list are now in the budget. The problem is that there was no preliminary presentation of those items or projects with the projected cost for the council to vote on or look at or consider or learn about prior to them showing up in the budget. We didn't get that information any bit faster than you did. Without that, the problem is that there was no preliminary presentation of those items or a project with the projected cost for the council to vote on. And without that formal vote, how or why are those items in the budget? I think they add up to about $2.6 million. So I would like to see the budget amended. I'd like to see it amended today. We still have another week to go. To remove the fiscal year 2005 funding from all of those items, because items removed may affect the millage rate, especially with the cost of living increase. And much as it pains me to say this, the Employee Performance Pay Plan and all the new staff positions, with the exception of public safety. I was the one who suggested that we do the Employee Performance Pay Plan, because I really felt it was needed for our public safety workers. And yet, when I asked for what was contained in the public or in the Performance Pay Plan, I was not able to get a copy of that either. I wanted to make sure that it was written the way I wanted, and it covered what I thought or envisioned as wanting, but I was not allowed to get that. So please don't try to tell me that every new item in the budget will come in front of council for final approval when the money is actually spent. While that is true, every one of those items in the budget increases the total budget amount and drives the millage rate higher than it should be or needs to be. I had discussions about my desire to do a full rollback, because citizens are struggling with inflation. And increases in goods, services, utilities, yeah, my electric bill was the highest I've ever paid for an electric bill for last month, and I'm sure it's gonna be higher this month. Too many people here in Peachtree City are living paycheck to paycheck. Ignoring or disregarding the plight of our citizens is simply heartless. There's no point in setting the millage rate based on all of those items that are in the budget, included in the budget. Many of them should be defunded for fiscal year 2025. Then set the millage rate, and if, as we progress through the year, there are adequate resources to add some of those items and actually fund them in the middle of the year, we can add them back into the budget as funded items. To be responsible and accountable to our citizens and not overburden them, we should be setting the budget as though it's coming out of our pockets. We have the opportunity, and I think an obligation, to remove items and evaluate each of those items individually with the cost of each of those items. What we are struggling with right now is the issue of having true responsibility and transparency in our budget. If you are proud of the items in the budget, why refuse to give me the simple data that I asked for? I asked for a copy of the Employee Performance Pay Plan and was told three council members had to agree that I should get it. I recommended that plan, because I really thought that was the way we should go. But without the details, I can't even support the same plan that I recommended. How do we do what's best for our citizens if we cannot get answers to simple questions that we feel are vital to making our decisions? My Christmas wish list every year, as a kid, had a snow cone machine on it and a horse. I never got the snow cone machine. I did eventually get the horse. My mother was far wiser than I was. So I guess I have to play the part that my mother played all those years ago. But I'm sorry that this process let staff get their hopes up for all these things. But since you choose to wait until now to tell us the actual cost, you leave me, certainly, and hopefully the rest of us, with no choice but to tell you that what items we want defunded or removed from the budget. But it's the five of us who have to impose the tax on the citizens, not the staff. It's the council that has to actually do that tax approval. So we're the ones that are gonna take the heat for it. If anything, this has taught me that city council retreats are a sham intended to bloat the budget. Our next retreat is scheduled for July 30th and 31st in Suwannee. I objected to wasting money having the retreat in Suwannee. It's a waste of money. We could have the retreat here in Peachtree City. I was outvoted. Why? What will we do in Suwannee that we can't do right here for a fraction of the cost? So hopefully, either tonight or at our retreat, we will identify the items to defund or remove, and maybe then I will be able to say the retreat was productive and saved some money. And since we're not gonna actually address individual items at this point that I think need to be defunded, I guess I'm done with my comments for now.
All right. Counsel, wrap-up comments? Any? Hearing none. We'll move on to council staff topics. Saturday, July 20th, citywide shredding event, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Mackintosh Trail Complex. I do want to make a note that right now, in July, through the end of this month, we're accepting applications for volunteer positions on our new transportation advisory group, on our CVB, our planning commission, and our airport authority. And you can watch our social media for all those opportunities, but don't delay. Or you can find that through our website. And I think it's on government, mayor, and council volunteer opportunities. Anybody else, something you want to bring up?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Madam Mayor, is that okay?
Please.
First of all, I want to thank Keith Larson for bringing up the Battery Way. It's one of my higher priority projects coming forward with the recreation money that we have from SPOLOST. This is not tax money. Well, tax money as id valorem, it's the sales tax that's gonna be used for that. And I want to just make sure that that stays at a high priority to get done. It is one of the best areas in the city that could use by the most people in this city. That's number one. Number two, you've heard me before, I love trees. I do want to have more trees. I want to plant more trees here in this city. And the tree commission is something, I know the mayor and I are on this together. We'll be bringing that forward to set up a tree commission. So I'm really excited about that. I know it sounds silly, I'm excited about trees. But you know what? That's what makes us special here in this city.
I'm right there with you.
Is what we do. So with that, I'm done.
So is Linda.
Anything else, staff? Any other council staff topics?
I have a topic.
Oh, sure.
Very important one. Following the last planning commission meeting, Chairman Scott Rittenhour and Commissioner Kenneth Hamner approached me and asked for my help to introduce the subject to the council to get it on the agenda for a vote. They are aware that items need to be introduced by council so that a vote can be made to add this, any item to an agenda. The subject that they wish to present to council is their proposal to have a 54 East overlay district, which would guide redevelopment on the east side of Peachtree City bordering State Road 54. I suggested to them that we might want to establish a citywide design guideline and then outline specific village differences. We discussed the issue of not having an ordinance to require, and this is a major concern to the planning commission, that we don't have an ordinance that requires bike racks. We don't have an ordinance that requires golf cart parking. And we don't have an ordinance that requires a specific designated location or area for electric charging stations, whether they're for golf carts or for cars. And those are all issues that they felt needed to be addressed, whether that's by adding ordinances for those or incorporating it into the design guidelines. So basically, I would like to make a motion to add a presentation by planning commissioners to the city council agenda for the purposes of discussing overlay districts, design guidelines, and specific ordinances that they feel may need to be updated to accommodate changes that they recommend.
I love it. Counsel member Brown, we won't make a motion in council staff topics, but I think we're all nodding our heads.
Yes, we do. Ted Meeker specifically said it's better to make the actual motion so that city staff are actually aware of what to write down and what's being-
I would've said, let's be sure to, let's not wait until another council meeting, which will be August, and we can bring it forth in our July retreat. And I think everybody's on board with that. I think it's great.
I have a comment. What I sent you in that email that you ignored is that we already have an overlay district up there. The overlay district is-
On the west side.
Only on the west side.
Only on the west side. It's very geographic restricted.
And so it sounds to me like they're interested in carrying something similar across the entire east side from 74 all the way east to the city boundaries.
And possibly beyond, Ms. Brown?
This was part of the UDO project.
Right. It's, I think, okay, it's like, let's put the cart before the horse. No, let's put the horse in front of the cart. They asked if they could come and make a presentation. I think we should let them come and find out what the planning commission's concerns are. They- I, they, they asked in, in the email that we got today, basically Scott Rittenhour, because of his job, would like it to be on actually the September 3rd agenda. Like the, the evening meeting in September. That is, okay? And I, I think we should actually just let them come forward, explain what, and there are other issues, I'm sure that they're having on the planning commission as these properties on the east side of town are being redeveloped. And, and their, their interest is, yes, taking the overlay district potentially from 54 West, figuring out if it needs to be changed or modified or updated to include things for bike racks and electric vehicles and golf cart parking, et cetera, and using the one as a template for the other.
I think that's a good idea.
Whether that goes beyond that with other things.
But I think they need to come in and talk to us.
I think that's a great.
I think, I think the presentation is absolutely what we need.
Uh, do you still feel you need to make a motion, or are we going to go for it?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow them so that we can tell them for sure. You're on the agenda for September the 3rd.
Fifth.
And, oh, it's the 5th?
Is it the 5th?
Oh.
Can I get a couple of comments before we go to the motion?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh, first of all, I echo what, what's being said literally by everyone here on the dais. I think we all want it, and I do like the idea, truly like the idea, to take what we've already done. I think, uh, Councilman Dostadio was involved in the overlay districts in the past, and take that to the whole city, not just to the east side, not just to the south side, whatever. I see it happening all over the city, so I want to see it, I would like to see it, uh, taken across the entire city and not just in one little area.
All right, I need, go ahead.
I just think you got to be careful with that.
Okay.
The overlay district is usually got specialized, uh, fixtures, place, things like that, things that you don't want to have everywhere.
Absolutely, but that's the starting point for our good people that we have on the planning commission. Let them hack, you know, to hack at that and take a look at it, to pull this out, put that one in, and let them do that work. There's no need for us to get involved in all of that.
I agree, and if they come in with a plan, then we can vote on the plan.
Exactly, exactly.
I have a motion on the table to invite the planning commission members listed to come in and present in our September 5th, uh, city council meeting. Can I get a, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Great idea. Any other council staff topics? Staff? I'm going to assume we don't have executive session since we don't have a lawyer.
We don't have a lawyer tonight.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, and thank you for joining us.